Tom Montpel.
Yeah, Tom Montpel.
He called and sent his emails.
Good evening. Good evening and welcome to the May 16th Milford Planning and Zoning Board. If we'd stand for a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence, please. Again, good evening. If I could have roll call from my left, please. Richard Lutz.
Mike Dolan.
John Grant.
Anthony Sutton.
Carl S. Moore.
Rick Verone.
Tom Nichol.
Jim Quish.
And I'm board chair Scott Marlowe, and we're joined by David Solkas, city planner, and Phyllis Leggett, board secretary. Again, good evening. We have quite a few items on the agenda tonight, so we'll jump right into it. First item is item C. CGS 8-24 approval for 44 through 64 River Street, approval of lease at 58 River Street, Unit 14. Mr. Solkas, could you?
Yeah, the city wants to enter into a lease for a retail space for one year with the leasing, and that's it.
And I know this is purely just the way it happens.
Administrative, yes. Just to remind the board, when the city enters into agreements, when the city sells things, this board has to do what's called an 8-24, which means that you have to approve that. Your approval then goes to the Board of Alderman for their action, and if the Board of Alderman approves it, then it occurs. If the board does not approve the 8-24, it still goes to the Board of Alderman, and then they just would need a supermajority to approve it.
Are there questions from the board on this? Seeing none, I'd like to entertain a motion. Mr. Lutz?
Yeah, I'd like to approve the motion.
Mr. Nichols. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of a public hearing from last, from a couple weeks ago, our last meeting. It's item D-2, 73 Cooper Avenue, Zone R5, petition of Christopher Field for special permit and coastal management site plan review approval to construct a single-family residence on map 26, Block 458, Parcel 51, of which Field &amp; Sun Builders LLC is the owner. And my, if I remember correctly, there was a few corrections that needed to happen to the plans, and that's what we'll be looking at.
That's correct. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, for the record, Thomas Lynch, I'm here tonight with my client Christopher Field from Field &amp; Suns Builders. This is a continuation of the public hearing from the last meeting, and I will be very brief. The plans were submitted. The elevations were set forth on the plans. Mr. Grant had raised a question as to the height of the building, and that's been set forth on the plans, and I believe they indicate in height of 33 feet, which is below the 35-foot limit, based on the measurement from the calculation of the mean grade. So with that, I have nothing else further. You have a very busy agenda tonight, and I'd ask that you approve this application.
Thank you. Mr. Solkas, is there any additional information?
No, but you may recall from the last meeting, because the board got right into the issues with the plan, we actually didn't complete the public hearing, I don't believe. Yeah, so I just wanted to remind you of that.
Are there questions for the board? Did everyone had a chance to review the plans? Is there, are there any further questions on the revised elevations? Okay, seeing none, this is a public hearing. So at this time, I would invite anyone who is in favor of this proposal, this project, to come forward. If you would state your name and address, address all your comments to the board, and if you would keep your comments to about three minutes. So anyone in favor of this project? All right, seeing none, if there's anyone that is opposed to this project, again, if you would approach the podium, state your name and address, keep all your comments addressed to the board, and if you would keep your comments to about three minutes. Again, anyone opposed? All right, seeing none, is there any further questions from the board? Then we'll close this part, we'll close the public hearing, and I would entertain a motion on this.
Yeah, I would make a motion to approve.
There's a motion that's been seconded. All in favor? Is there any opposed? Seeing none, the motion passes. Thank you. All right, next, next item is under E, public hearings, and the first item is E3, proposed re-subdivision of 150 Boston Post Road, 184 Boston Post Road, 92 Plains Road, 100 Plains Road, 110 Plains Road, and map 53, Block 304, Lot 88A, Zone CCD-1, and re-subdivision application of Metro 150 LLC to establish a three-lot subdivision on map 43, Block 304, Lots 80 and 80A, and map 53, Block 304, Lots 82, 83, 84, and 88A, of which Jordan Realty LLC is the owner. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is John Nuff. I'm an attorney with an office at 147 Broad Street. I'm here on behalf of Metro 150 LLC. Metro 150 LLC is the contract purchaser of 16.24 acres of property located in the CCD-1 zone, bounded generally by Plains Road on the north, Boston Post Road on the east, with the Gloria Shopping Center located at the corner, and as you all know-
Excuse me, Mr. Nuff, could you just adjust the microphone a little bit? Thank you.
I'm sure you all know it's been known as the Beard Property for many, many years, decades if not centuries. Just a note on your agenda. We have five items on the agenda, eight different applications, one subdivision, three special permits, and one regulation amendment. So I think the manner in which we're going to do this, we're going to keep them all very discreet and separate. First is going to be the subdivision application, and then after that, we'll do the retail special permit and site plan, the hotel special permit and site plan, and then last, the combined hearing of the regulation amendment and the multifamily residential application. So I apologize, it's going to be a little bit of revolving door, because each of our experts is going to be up here three times. You have to endure me four times, but we, but we promise to be concise but thorough. So we'll get, we'll get through all this together. So the sub, actually, it's the re-subdivision application is the simplest of the application before you, because as you know, when you act on a subdivision or re-subdivision application, you're acting in a ministerial capacity. Currently, the property is made up of six different lots. I'd be happy to show you. You have, you have the original survey in your, in your packets. The six different parcels are identified both on the agenda and in our application, and they're very clearly marked. And what we propose to do is essentially consolidate those six parcels into three. I think it's important to note that we submitted this re-subdivision application just out of caution and out of a very conservative approach. Clearly, we are not creating lots. We are reducing the total number of lots. But nonetheless, because of the sort of the odd configuration of the existing lots, and because of the sort of the importance of this project, we wanted to take the most conservative approach after, you know, long consultation with David, and so we submitted this re-subdivision application. So the three lots that we propose is one, fronting on Boston Post Road, identified as Lot 1, two others, fronting on Plains Road, identified as Parcels 2 and 3, two is the multifamily residential, three is the one that's closest to the highway, and that's where the proposed hotel will be. Obviously, we're going to be discussing in a lot more detail the proposed uses and buildings on each of the three lots when we get to the other hearings. But in terms of the re-subdivision application, each of these lots complies with all of your bulk requirements in every manner, shape, and form. So the one other thing I would note, that because we are creating three new lots, all the other requirements that we have beyond the standard bulk requirements of minimum acreage and all that, such as buffering, is going to be repeated on both sides. So wherever there's a buffer requirement, it's going to be located on both sides of that property line. So when we get to the landscaping, just part of the discussion, for each of the, for each of the three hearings, I think you're going to be very impressed by, frankly, the amount of landscaping that's going to be located on the three sites. And you know, I mean, this is very simple, very straightforward. We're reducing the number of lots. We'd be happy to answer your questions. Ray Pear is our professional engineer. You can be hearing from him later on each of the three other matters. So if you have any questions about the sub, the re-subdivision, obviously, we'd be happy to answer them, but I mean, it's very straightforward, and that's all we have, unless you have questions.
Thank you. Mr. Solkas.
I really have nothing to add to that. Mr. Nuff gave an accurate representation of this process.
Okay, thank you. Is there questions from the board members on the subdivision?
Are any of the infrastructure items that we're going to discuss, discuss tonight shared by multiple lots that are in the subdivision?
Yeah, there's a few things. There's detention basin or two. There's going to be some grading easements across property lines, but clearly, I mean, and this often takes place when the property, when two different properties are owned by different parties. I mean, clearly, it's a much simpler matter, because, you know, we are the contract purchaser. Assuming we get all of our approvals, we'll close on the entire parcels, all the parcels. We'll file our re-subdivision map, and we'll be negotiating essentially with ourselves. We will be giving ourselves cross easements for those, for those things that cross property lines.
On the left side of Lot 1, has that lot line already been established?
Yes. And just for our own purposes, we're talking about this lot line here.
I mean, has that already been?
Yes. That Mylar has been recorded on the, with the city clerk. So yes, that lot line has been modified already.
Is there other questions from the board members at this time?
Okay. Yes, Mr. Grant.
One additional question. Right now, that lot is kind of being used, I'm not really what, how to describe it. There's a lot of tractor trailers, sand pits or piles and something like that. What, basically, what's the plan of what happens to all those tractor trailers and front-end loaders and all those piles of dirt and sand and stuff, once this gets subdivided?
Well, once construction begins, the first thing is, I mean, is to remove all those, all those vehicles, and then there's demolition plan in your plant sets, and the property will be regraded to make way for the three different components.
You have no idea where all that's going to be, where all that's going to go from the property?
I mean, frankly, we're not the, we're not the current property owner. We're merely the applicant, and I'm sure the, the contract requires the current owner to remove those items.
Is there other questions from the board at this time? Yes.
Yes, I have a question. This three-lot subdivision, when and if it's necessary, will they be using that Gloria Commons easement?
No. In fact, there's two different easements, or actually, one easement covering two different things, a drainage easement and a sewer easement. Our plan is to use neither of those.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board members at this time? Okay, thank you, Attorney Nuff. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I would invite the public, those who are in favor of this, and what I'd like to do is, just as the attorney had said, is there is a bunch of different items here, so I'd like to address just the subdivision at this time. So if there is anyone in favor of this re-subdivision, if you would come forward, state your name and address, and address your comments to the board, and if you could keep your comments to about three minutes. Again, anyone in favor? All right, seeing none, I would invite at this time, anyone who is opposed to this subdivision. Again, if you would come forward, state your name and address, keep your comments to about three minutes, address your comments to the board. Again, anyone opposed? All right, seeing none. Are there any other questions from the board on this matter, on this subdivision? All right, seeing none, we will close this, this portion of the public hearing, this item. Thank you. Is it, is it the board's pleasure to act on this item tonight?
I have a comment. If there's infrastructure in common, and the board might wish to change site plans, which is our option to do, I don't like the approach of taking each one individually. I would rather consider the whole thing as one, especially if, especially since there's infrastructure in common.
Mr. Solkas, could you comment on that?
What is being asked of you for this first application is basically redrawing the property lines, so that really, whether or not this, any of these projects get approved or not approved, the applicant can still ask to redo these property lines. So that really has nothing to do with any infrastructure. Regarding the infrastructure, again, each one of these projects is going to be, and it's being presented to you as a standalone project, and as was explained, infrastructure is a very wide term, and you're going to hear from the applicant that what they're talking about are some easements for drainage. There aren't, they aren't sharing any roads, they aren't sharing any electrical, because again, these are going to be three distinct, separate applications. The applicants will go into more detail as those applications are presented to you, but in terms of the redrawing of the property lines, if it's, if you want to do that now, you could.
Mr. Lutz, is that?
I have an additional question. Are they going to share an access road? Is the hotel and the residences going to share one access road?
No, they are not. They are two totally separate parcels. They, each one has their own separate entryway.
And the other question I would have is, if the board suggested to the applicant an access road to the post road, which would have to cross that parcel that's going to be retail, would we be able to make that suggestion if we take these as three separate things?
Well, I guess the question is, and what you're actually now saying is you are not agreeing with the way the lines are being drawn for the parcel. So then the reason, the next question would be, on what basis would you be basically telling them to redraw the lines if what they're proposing is perfectly conforming with our subdivision regulations? Because what they're proposing is, is in conformance with the regulations, and as you will see when you hear the rest of the applications, no mention from police or fire or any health safety was ever mentioned, or even traffic was mentioned, to need access through basically other people's properties. Because at the moment, this, you know, these are three, again, going to be three separate development projects, which in the end, may or may not be developed by the applicant before you.
I'm not saying I'm against, you know, the thing at all. It's just I'd, I'd like to reserve voting on this until after we hear the whole story.
Mr. Verone.
I'm interested in what the future impact would be, or consequence, if we were to approve the subdivision and through circumstances, not approve another part of the project. What happens to that property at that point?
I guess I would direct my, I guess this would be a correct-
To Mr. Solkas it would be correct.
Mr. Solkas, to you. Suppose we, by, for example only, decided to not approve the 168 units. What happens to that property after it's subdivided? What's the future consequence of that?
What would happen is, the applicant would have to decide whether or not they would go through with filing the Mylar for each, basically making, making an official subdivision, assuming you approve the subdivision. If the hotel isn't approved, you still have a subdivided new lot that's laid out, that some other development could be, or some other application could be brought before you for your approval at some future time. So again, the subdividing of the property really doesn't, doesn't negate the development of, or, or doesn't make the development any more real or not real. Again, we're talking about, again, rearranging property lines.
Are there other questions? Yes, Mr. Lutz.
So just, Mr. Solkas, as a clarification, if we approve this subdivision, is it binding on the present owner if something, if nothing else went forward, and the contract buyer was not interested in the property anymore, would what we do tonight have an effect on the current owner?
No, because if you subdivide this now, and say, at the end of all of these proceedings, you decide you don't like any of, of the developments that are being proposed, you've still approved the subdivision. That subdivision only becomes real and legal when the Mylar is filed on the land records. So it would be up to whatever agreement the applicant has, it's up to the landowner. Perhaps the landowner would go, yeah, you know, thank you very much for getting this approved, and yeah, go ahead and file it. That's between them.
Are there other questions from the board? And I would leave it the board's pleasure if they would like to act on this. The public hearing part of this is closed, so we can't go back to, to that part, but we can act on this if the board chooses to. So I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the subdivision.
I'll second. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is item four. 150 Boston Post Road, 184 Boston Post Road, and 92 Plains Road, Zone CCD-1, petition of Metro 150 LLC for special permit and site plan review approval to construct a retail shopping center on map 43, Block 304, Parcels 80 and 80A, and map 53, Block 304, Parcel 82, of which Jordan Realty LLC is the owner. Mr. Nuff.
Good evening, John Nuff, for the record, 147 Broad Street, Milford, Connecticut. The first thing I want to do is hand in a memo to the city planning the zoning commission. It's a memo from me regarding compliance with the various notice requirements, particularly the posting of signs. As you know, there's, we have a number of frontages, and, and as these parcels have been comprised of, you know, Parcels 1, 2, and 3 have various parts of, of the, the previous six lots. So if you drove by the site, you would have seen lots and lots of signs, and so I just want to hand this in, which is photographs of all the signs related to the retail project. So I'm here tonight on behalf of Metro 150 LLC. This is a special permit and site plan application for an attractive 60,000 square foot retail shopping center on the proposed, or now existing Lot 1 of the re-subdivision, which will front on Boston Post Road. Retail stores in excess of 10,000 square feet are permitted in the CCD-1 zone, subject to special permit approval. All plans have been reviewed by the full city staff, and no concerns were raised. As David notes in the staff memo, the application complies with all zoning and subdivision requirements. The city engineer has requested certain technical changes to the plans, and we have no objection to making those changes or them being made, conditions of approval. With me tonight are Ray Pear, who's a professional engineer with the West Cotton Mapes, who's going to be discussing the site layout, John Wicco, licensed architect, who will be discussing architecture and landscaping, David Sullivan, who's a professional engineer with Mylon and your broom, who will be discussing traffic, and unfortunately, our landscape architect, Matt Pop, is, cannot be here this evening, so John Wicco will be playing two roles. I know that John will be discussing in detail how attractive the building will be, but I don't want, I don't want you to lose sight of what a terrific job that Matt Pop did with regard to landscaping, and also, just more importantly, how the applicant provided Matt with a great canvas on which to work. In many cases where a buffer is required, the proposed plan far exceeds the requirement. For instance, the regs require a six-foot buffer between a parking lot and the front lot line. In this application, we are providing a 20-foot buffer, which is the entire front setback area. Combined with the new sidewalk and the landscaping to state right-of-way, there'll be nearly a 40-foot wide landscaped area along Boston Post Road between the curb line and our parking lot. The landscaping along the, the side yards is similarly lush, and there's a convenient pedestrian access to the stores, on both sides of the stores, leading from the sidewalk to either side of the, of the proposed building. So with that introduction, I want to give you Ray Pear, who's going to walk you through the site, and then we'll get to John Wicco and Dave Sullivan.
Thank you, Attorney Nuff.
Good evening. Raymond Pear, from West Cotton Mapes, 142 Temple Street, New Haven. To my right, colored site plan depicting the subject property, we're identifying as Lot 1, the 5.97-acre retail shopping center parcel. Orientation, north to my upper right, the Boston Post Road at the lower portion of the sheet. We have the, all these property here to the right of the property, and then vacant land to the left. We have a long uninterrupted frontage of over 500 feet, which we are proposing continuous pedestrian sidewalk all along the front. We've got concrete aprons, entrance egress at both ends of the property. Working with a traffic engineer on the team, we've accommodated the safety and proper entrance egress of all safety vehicles, delivery vehicles, and automobiles for use of the site as a retail use. In addition, we have walkways flanking both ends of the site, the northern and southern boundaries, which allow pedestrians from the Boston Post Road walkway on up into the site, through pedestrian ramps, into the large concrete plaza in front of the facility, in front of the businesses. Also, bike racks at either end, so accommodating not only pedestrian, but bicycle traffic as well. Loading dock in the rear, as well as the dumpster enclosure areas. Met with city engineer, had much discussion and agreement, and we meet or exceed all deep and municipal requirements for storm drainage, water quality, and stormwater retention. deep and municipal requirements for storm drainage, water quality, and stormwater retention. We have police, fire approval, safety approval, meet all of the zoning regulations as represented on sheet OS-1 in the zoning table, and exceed all the parking requirements as represented in the table, parking table on sheet OS-2. With that, I'll hand the presentation over to Mr. Wico.
Thank you, Ray.
John Wico, architect for the project office at 50 Broad Street. Just going to take a walk over here, so I can point the old-fashioned way, I guess. The landscape plan was developed meeting the requirements to enhance the site and also enhance the visual image from the city. As John Nuff described, there's, you know, quite a lot of landscaping in the front. It exceeds the buffer requirements that are set forth in the landscape regulation. A description of what we were, what we are achieving with the plantings. On the entrance drive and along the parked areas, we lined the drive aisles with shade trees consisting of pin oaks, red maple, and ginkgos, the street trees, the streetscape. There's two, there's one that's on the property, which are the white oaks, crab apple, and hawthorn. So, they're large leafy trees. And then at the, the street trees that are in the esplanade on the state property, there are decorative flowering accent trees like crab apple, birch, and shad, which are also dispersed, a large shade tree, then we did some smaller ornamentals in between. In addition to the, to the front, inside the parking area, there are the required and much needed shade trees, which are under the 16, every 16 space requirement. We also have some screening trees, which are towards the rear of the property, which we're anticipating the residential development, and also towards the corners. And with those type of plantings in those areas, we are using more Norway evergreen, Siberian spruce, arborvitae, and hollies. So, it rounds off this back corner and gets a nice dense buffer to the residential from this side, as also from the residential side, and I'll tell you about those when we get there. And on the side property lines, we've got a variety of shade trees plus planting beds with roses, bayberries, and viburnums. So, it's a great natural mix of vegetation. It's a theme that we're going to see throughout at different intensities with the different lots that we've developed. We also have specified some bike racks, which Ray Pear talked about. We're very pleased to, you know, provide some ornamental access or plantings at the sidewalks that enter the site. And also, Matt designed the vegetation in the areas for where the snowshells are, whether that's just grass, or if there's areas that snow will be deposited, where it's not too large to be taken off the site. The vegetation either dies off in the winter, or it's hardy enough to get compressed and then come back to life in the spring. The dumpsters in this particular site are attached to the building. They're enclosed. There's three of them located at the loading docks at the rear, and they are screened with the fence, but they are towards the building and used by the individual tenants. I think Ray talked about the site circulation nicely. The LP-2, which has a plant list, if you're interested, it goes over quite extensively the type of plant, the quantities and sizes which all conform. And also in the site, we have the site pole sign element, which is in the southwest corner driveway in this area here. There is a detail of that element, which is comprised of two piers that are encased in architectural metalwork with a hundred-square-foot segmented sign for the different tenants that would be occupying the building, and also a tag that has the street address in large eight-inch letters. Also, part of the site improvements will be, will be the site lighting. We've included a photometric plan, PP-1, which quantifies all the different values. What we're most, we'd most like to talk about is that at the property line, we are at .2 maximum, where .5 is allowed for this zone. And use, PP-2 is a kind of a neat drawing you've seen before, kind of gives you that, you know, that nighttime view of what the intensities and where the light will be casted on the site. We have pole lights in the, in the parking lot. We have some directed pole lights at the side, and then there's some wall packs at the rear, trying to keep the light tight to the building so it doesn't spill out over into the residential development that was planned. And I guess I don't need to show these, but the other sheets are, the PP-3 are the specifications and schedules, which is here. And we also have the fixture cut sheets with also the details for the pole, the height being 20 feet with a two-foot pier out of the ground, and we're proposing square anodized aluminum poles. That's all the nice bits of the site. And then I can quickly go over the buildings. Just wanted to confirm that all the architectural zoning requirements on Ray's table on OS-1 are in compliance with the zoning regulation. I've got A1, the retail floor plan, which is 59,962 square feet. We're calling it 60,000. I'm showing three tenants. It could be as little as one tenant, but we anticipate up to three tenants based on market square foot requirements for the type of retail that we anticipate going here. Each tenant has proper egress from the rear with dumpster and loading via the loading dock. It also has appropriate entrance, canopies, doors, and architectural features that identify the different tenants that may be located here. Also have in your packet eighth-inch plans, which go in greater detail, the, just a little larger for you to see the different pieces of the building. That's eight through, A2 through A5. Getting to the elevations, we've designed a retail space with a variety of materials in a contemporary style that is conducive to many of the retail market that is available. There are also, on this sheet, we have the materials block that we described pretty clearly, what is proposed, but basically the general material are, it's a natural stained wood. We're using anodized metal, silver in color. We've got corrugated painted metal facade at the front. Also have a limestone ephes finish with deep scorelines to offset the metal. And then the taller feature has a horizontal wood siding with a splayed cornice. And throughout, there's different various fenestrations with, the center section has an awning. Towards the left is a canopy that is enclosed, almost like a solarium for the entrance to the other building that has, or other tenant, I mean, that has a stone facade. They're all, it's all spelled out. The sides, just of note, there are sides, some of the sides carry down the side as much as a third with the splayed cornice and wood siding. And the rest of the rear and the major portion of the sides are painted block. And if you go further in your packet, there's the blown-up elevations at eighth-inch scale as required, and we also called out more specifically some of the architectural features. While you're there, I can ask questions about those as you may have them. That concludes the building, lighting, and landscaping. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Our last presenter is Dave Sullivan from Mylona McBroom, who's going to discuss traffic.
Thank you again, David Sullivan. I'm a professional engineer and I manage the Traffic Engineering Transportation Planning Group at Mylona McBroom. Our offices are in Cheshire, Connecticut. The traffic study we conducted here was a standard, standard protocol traffic study. We looked at existing conditions. Then we evaluate existing conditions, including what changes in the area associated with the, with the proposal. And then we combine the traffic from the future conditions with and without, or build and no build scenario. We conduct analyses to determine what we call the levels of service, which are essentially letter grades, similar to a report card, with level of service A being the best and F being the worst. We look at our findings and then we make recommendations. So, our study looked at the impact of all three of these applications. I'll speak specifically to the retail portion of the application. The study area that we looked at was along Route 1 and along Plains Road. Plains Road from I-95 to Route 1, Route 1 from Plains Road intersection down to the Route 162 intersection. We looked at morning commuter peak hours during the week. We looked at afternoon commuter peak hours during the week, and we looked at Saturday midday peak hours. The traffic volumes in the area, the first thing we did was look at what Condat has done in the area and compared, looked for trends. And what we found was, for the most part, traffic growth in this area has been flat. In some cases, it's gone down a little bit, but generally, I would characterize it as no growth over the past several years. We also put out our own traffic counters, one on Plains Road and one on Route 1, and the one on Route 1 served two purposes. One, to get an updated count and compare our manual counts to, but also to give us travel speeds, so we could look at the adequacy of sight lines. We also did manual counts, as I mentioned. We did them during the morning from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., in the afternoon from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m., and 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. on a Saturday. From those counts, we extract the highest hour in that two-hour count period, and those are base condition traffic volumes. We then look for other developments in the area and also look to see what type of normal growth we might add into the future. We consulted with your town staff and also with the Bureau Policy and Planning at Condat. There were no significant other developments that would be adding traffic to this area, and it was suggested we use a .6 percent per year growth rate, even though we found current trends to be, as I mentioned, generally flat. So, we did that. And then we next look at the development, the retail development in this site. The access was described by Ray earlier, but we have a full access driveway on the south end. In this location, we're recommending that that location be signalized. We've done the appropriate traffic signal warrants, which Condat will be looking for, and a traffic signal is warranted there. At the northerly driveway, we've restricted the driveway to no left turns out, so you'll be able to take a left turn in, you'll be able to take a left turn out, I mean, a right turn in, and you'll be able to take a right turn out, no left turn out. And we've reinforced that with a geometric island at that location. In general, we then take the no build and the build traffic volumes. We do our analyses and we looked at all of the intersections in the area. And the first thing we did was look at wherever there were levels of service Es and Fs in the existing traffic signals and look to see if we can improve those. And at, I think, four or five locations, we saw that the existing conditions could be improved with signal timing. So, that shows up as recommendations in our report. And for our mitigation along the site driveway, the physical mitigation is, of course, the signal, and the appropriate changes to Route 1 along that, the site frontage to provide a left turn in at the signal and to have the proper striping. We will not need to do any widening on Route 1. The pavement width is adequate. The signal will operate at a very good level of service B, and the unsignalized northerly driveway will also operate at a very good level of service B. This particular site will be reviewed by the Office of State Traffic Administration as a major traffic generator, and that process will begin immediately. So, that's, that's a summary of the findings for this particular site. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. And by the way, I was remiss in not identifying the fact that my client is here. Bob Smith from Metro Star Properties is a managing member, also the managing member of the applicant, Metro 150 LLC. So, to the extent there's any questions that the rest of us can't answer, Bob is certainly here to respond to those. That concludes our affirmative presentation. Obviously, we'd be happy to answer any questions. As we've noted on several occasions, we have complied with all your regulations. There are no outstanding staff comments, other than sort of the more technical things that your city engineer wants Ray to tweak in the plans, but nothing in terms of substance whatsoever. So, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, attorney. Mr. Sulcus, comment.
The plan is proposed meets the zoning regulations, so I really can't add much more than that.
Thank you. Are there questions from the board? Mr. Grant.
Other question on traffic. On a site plan, it shows on the Boston Post Road, it shows some divider islands between the opposite sides of the road. Is that something that's proposed by the state, or is this something part of the project?
Are you referring to the?
On the site plan, it has like center dividers. Are they just lines, or are they just actually-
Those are just lines.
-a curb with concrete in the middle, like that's further down by the, by the post mall?
Yeah, those are just lines. There's no physical separation that's proposed here.
Other questions? Yes, Mr. Brown.
I'm sorry, could you clarify the right and left-hand turns coming out of there? I just did not visualize something. I apologize.
Yeah, well, I kind of stumbled over that, too. At the signalized intersection, which is down here, all of the movements will be allowed. So, you could take a left turn out, left turn in. For the left turn in, we'll have a new left turn lane into it. Coming out, there'll be two lanes out, a right turn lane and a left turn lane. At this driveway, you'll be able to take a right turn out, no left turn out, and a left turn in and a right turn in.
Thank you.
Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, I have a question. You stated that the traffic growth was rather insignificant, and that looked like it was in the future also. I beg to differ with you, but did you calculate in the possibility of Grillo putting up his apartments on West Avenue, which would affect US-1? I'd like to see that on your graph.
We did, in fact, use a .6 percent growth rate. As I mentioned, we consulted with the Bureau Policy and Planning, and they suggested the .6. What I was saying, the flat growth was what we've seen to date. What I was saying, the flat growth was what we've seen to date with the historic data that we've had from DOT, which was 2009 through, I believe it was 2012 or 2013. And then compared that also with the current traffic count that we did. So the growth has been relatively flat. DOT was conferred. We did check with your staff, too, about other major traffic generators that are approved and need to be included in our background traffic volumes. And at the time we made that request, we were told the .6 percent growth that we received that number from DOT was what we should use to increase existing to background.
Other questions? Mr. Brown?
When you put these, the traffic numbers that you just gave us are concerning just the shopping center. Did you do the same study for the residential buildings and for the hotel or motel?
Yes. The findings that I just reported on included the hotel and the residential traffic. And when we come back for the other applications, it'll essentially be the same, but I'll focus on the operations at those driveways. But all three are included in these findings that I just reported on.
Okay, so I've already established I'm a little confused. So let me see if I understand this correctly. You're saying that there's going to be negligible growth when the entire project is done in traffic? Is that, do I understand it?
No. It would be a small amount of growth, .6 percent or half a percent growth per year without these projects. So that's saying if nothing happened out here, the projection by the state is that every year you'll get a half a percent growth.
What's the percentage going to be when this project is completed, if it is?
The percentage? I could calculate that. I haven't. It would be different at every section of road, because as the traffic goes out, if it's going one way, it's one number. If it's going another way, for instance, from the retail portion, only 10% or so is going south. So the impact to the same ADT number, or average daily traffic number there, would be a lower percentage than it would be here, where a larger percentage of the traffic is going. I suppose I can give you some idea in raw numbers without doing the calculations?
I'm just concerned. I live in this neighborhood. The traffic that runs through there during peak hours can be significant.
Let me give you an example.
Regardless of what the numbers show.
Right now, and I'll do the math in my head here quickly, and I'm looking at the afternoon peak hour. Six, five, seventy, six, seventy. There's about 1,350 cars right here in the afternoon peak hour, and the retail will be adding to that same section. In one direction, 70 cars, and in the other direction, 133. So maybe calculation, maybe 10% on that particular, which is probably the worst case, which is between the next signal and the site.
Are there other questions from board members?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Lutz?
Maybe I missed it with the impressive set of plans you sent home for us. How is the drainage on this plot being handled?
The drainage currently is fairly self-contained on the site, being a sand gravel, in sand gravel nature. Proposed development, again, will retain all of the water on site. We have the soils information. We've designed a very large, extensive, underground stormwater retention system for all storm events, including the 100-year event, and provided water quality measures as well. So there will be no discharge from the development. There are a series of catch basins, and inlets, and pipes, and underground retention that would retain and recharge the clean water into the ground.
Are there other questions from board members at this time? Good, thank you. This is a public hearing, and at this time, I would ask for anyone that is in favor of this project to come forward, to state their name and address, address your comments to the board, and if you would keep your comments to about three minutes. So again, anyone in favor? All right, seeing none, at this time, I would ask anyone that is opposed to this project, if you would, again, approach the podium, state your name and address, address your comments to the board, and if we would keep the comments to about three minutes. Anyone opposed?
I can't just sit here, because obviously, I'm very opposed to this whole project. But one of the things that I was just listening, oh, my name, Susan, the last name is Val Signo. It's 105 Benjamin Heights Drive, here in Milford. And I just wanted to say, in regard to the traffic that we were just talking about, and how other projects in the area aren't going to impact the traffic, I live in that area, and we have another huge complex besides Grillo's. It's the one down on Benjamin Height, not on Ben, what is it, Bick Drive and Nogatuck Avenue, of like almost 300 apartment units. Plus all that this company here is willing, wants to put in, the mall, the hotel, the apartment buildings that they want to build over there. There's no doubt it's going to change. And there is, there has been a major change in traffic over the last few years, with some of what they've done on the Post Road in that kind of immediate area, the Cumberland's, the Dunkin' Donuts. It's all had a big impact over there. And I'm only sad that I didn't get up earlier when you were talking about the subdivision, because I really didn't understand what that was about. But I would think that was the stepping stone, and we should have all said, no, we don't want to divide this property up the way that you had planned to do it, but it is already too late. But some of the other things I was going to say, not just about the traffic, which was, I just couldn't sit back there and not say something, is even the construction of what you're saying, like a contemporary style to the buildings. I mean, I've grown up in Milford. I've lived here all my life, and I could never understand why Milford kind of deviates from keeping things. They say they keep Milford quaint and, you know, with charm and country looking, but they don't. They let developers come and kind of like do their own thing. Sometimes they do build something that kind of looks nice in town, and other times, these things are like atrocious. It's like, what is that structure, and why would they put it here? It just doesn't go. And I know a lot of times, it's because contemporary is less expensive than trying to stay with a more of a New England flair. Not that I want this project to go ahead anyway, but if it did, at least try to make it where it fits in, and try to keep Milford to a, you know, Milford's developed so much in the last short time that it's hard to swallow all of this. Every time I turn around, and I can't be, and people don't want to be at all of these zoning meetings, because it's time-consuming. I don't know how you, I give you guys credit for sitting there, listening to this every week or every month, but that's really all I wanted to say. I am opposed to everything that's on the agenda tonight, because I think it's all not in good, it's just not good for that area. It's way too much stuff, and obviously, it's because it all comes down to people making money. I understand that. It always comes back to money. But that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak opposed? Good evening.
Good evening. Dorothy Kozowitz, 60 Beneville Road. I can't believe that you're even thinking of another shopping center.
I'm sorry, could you repeat your name? I'm sorry, could you repeat your name? We just didn't hear it.
Dorothy Kozowitz, 60 Beneville Road. I can't believe we're looking at another shopping center, with every empty store from Devon all the way up to the Orange Line, and we're going to put more empty stores in? It makes no sense. I can't stay for the rest of the meeting, but putting two more driveways onto Plains Road, I also live off Plains Road. I don't know where he got his traffic, but there's a lot more traffic than there is. You can't come out of Aldi's and make a left turn. It takes you a long time, so I think the board has to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Good evening.
Hello. My name's Christine Perella. I live at 1253 Nogatuck Avenue. I just wrote a little short paragraph that I would like to read to you. I've been a Milford resident for 25 years. I used to proudly announce that I lived in Milford, but now I say it waiting for some pitying response. Now I live in a place where the safety of birds during nesting season stops us from enjoying a large majority of our beaches, yet we have no problem ruining the historic value of the city for the money-hungry development of shopping centers and hotels. Now I live in a place where the Kmart and Cherry Street plazas are in shambles, and our mall is losing its core stores, but hey, let's build another plaza and add more traffic, because one of Milford's highest taxpayers says so. Milford is no longer going to be a small city with a big heart, where English settlement took place in 1639, where Captain Kidd sailed, and where George Washington dined and rested. Now it's a place where we tear down historic houses for profit, where we don't care if our residents can't get to work right down the road because of the traffic from overpopulation, and where our mayor disappears for periods at a time while this all takes place. It's not the small city with a big heart that I grew up in. It's an overdeveloped, through-city with destroyed history. The traffic on Bick and Nogatuck are at dangerous levels now, and I'd like to also add that I work at Subway World Headquarters, which I can see from my backyard, and it takes me 15 minutes to get home, right around the corner. So I just want to ask, when will the development stop? Because I don't know about you, but I don't want to live in a big city made up of affordable houses, hotels, and shopping centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is opposed to this project? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Sharon Andre Giglio, 214 Plains Road. I also grew up in Milford. It's my hometown, and over the years, I've seen horrendous changes. Same thing, I feel that there's historic value in this town. It used to be very quaint, and over the years, it's changed drastically, for the worst, I believe. At the home at 214 Plains Road, we get traffic from Bick, the Kingdom Hall, and there's been a light, traffic light there. To my knowledge, there's been three or four deaths, right almost at our front door. Cars have come in the driveway, smashed into the house next door. It's really horrible. My parents lived in that house for 64 years, and it's a shame. And people in that neighborhood had a lot of pride in their homes, and it's changed drastically, and I'm totally against this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is opposed to this project? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none. Attorney Nuff, you have an opportunity to... Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, John, off the record. So we heard essentially three sort of generalized concerns: traffic, stores, and historic quality. We'll take them in reverse order. I mean, there is no historic quality to this property in terms of its existing condition. Certainly, there's an interesting historic quality to the property owner's acquisition of it many, many years ago, but beyond that, there is no historic quality. It is a vacant piece of property with no natural resource benefit or any, or historic benefits. So that's not relevant. In terms of the number of stores, we have every confidence. As you know, MetroStar is a first-class developer here in Milford, an unblemished, untarnished track record. We have every confidence that this development will be fully tenanted from the retail perspective, and we are very confident of that. Frankly, you know, we understand that there are certain challenges in the retail market, but those challenges are affecting other types of development, particularly the mall. I mean, anchor stores are having a difficult time. We do not foresee the same sort of difficulty here. In fact, we're very confident that we'll be able to find quality retailers to be located at this location. And then in terms of traffic, we know that OSHA is going to have to review this. The levels of service are fine. There are, there will be no traffic issues, to the extent that there's going to be some residential development. Peak hour times for residential are different from retail, and again, we have every confidence that based upon the police report that we have, which has elicited no concerns whatsoever, and the requirement that OSHA review this as well, the traffic will pose no problems whatsoever. So happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. As is our policy, the public has an opportunity to respond to the comments that you just made. So if there is anyone, again, that would like to speak in favor of this project, what we'd like to do, though, it has to be limited to the comments, or we'd like to rebut the comments that Attorney Nuff made. So I would give everyone that opportunity to do that. So first, those in favor. Okay, seeing none, anyone that would like to speak against, and if you would limit your comments to addressing issues that Attorney Nuff just brought up? All right, seeing none. Attorney Nuff, you have one last opportunity here.
Again, if the Commission asks questions, we're happy to answer them, but other than that, we're good.
Thank you. Does anyone, do any members of the board have further questions? Mr. Quish?
Yes, basically, a traffic question. I understood Commissioner Lutz's feeling that it might be important to look at the entire bulk of what's happening here, and I felt that the subdivision really didn't warrant that. I do feel, though, that if we're looking at traffic, I don't know that it's going to be helpful to hear it piecemeal, kind of like a global look at traffic under the posit that everything is approved, right? So let's look at that scenario and obviously include potential development in the area so we can really get an understanding of what the traffic impact will be if everything is approved.
To be clear, and Dave can add on if he wants, but when he did his traffic reports, he assumed that each of the three different components were fully open and operating. So there's no question that he took into account all three projects, all three being open, when he did his sort of global traffic reports. So I just want to make that very clear. He did not look at each of these three components discreetly and ignoring the others, in the same way that if there was a new shopping center being proposed across the street, he would have to account for that as well. So he is, it would be intellectually dishonest for him to ignore those other, those other projects that are before this evening. So I mean, this is a separate, discreet application, taking into account those other two uses, which are rather low traffic generators, and I think we demonstrated that we comply with all applicable traffic regulations for this application.
Great. Then I have a couple of specific questions, then, first, traffic. One would be, you had mentioned that you, that on the Post Road, in that 500 feet in front of the proposed development, at a afternoon peak, you have 550 cars in an hour. Is that accurate?
No. I forget where I put my, no, I think it was 1,300 total in both directions. One direction was 700, the other direction was 650.
Okay, and so what then, so you're saying 1,500 per hour? I said 1,550. That's what I wrote down from what you said. So then you will say that, let's take them individually now. We have the retail. What will that add in that same afternoon peak?
Okay.
I have it at about 210.
Yeah, and I thought the, I'm talking about right here now, just north of the...
I, I think I'm talking about north and south, or east and west on the post road. That's what I, I understood. You're 1,550 to me.
Right, right there.
Right, at, at the northern border of the property, or eastern.
So, in the, in the afternoon's peak hour...
For the retail, what will that add?
For the retail, there is approximately 200.
So 133 northbound and 75 southbound. Is that what you had said?
Seventy, seventy southbound, yeah.
Okay. So that's, that's 200. Now, if we add the, the residential...
The residential adds...
What will that add during afternoon peak? And I'd like to see morning peak.
The residential adds 11 in the afternoon. And the hotel adds 12 in the afternoon.
Thank you.
Other questions from the board? Mr. Lutz?
Yes. Did you assume that a certain number of people that are coming out of the retail stores will make the turn at Plains Road to go up to the, to the thruway?
Yes, we did.
How does that affect Plains Road? How many people do you guess at a peak hour will be going up, up Plains Road?
Well, I'll go back to the afternoon peak hour again for discussion purposes. In the afternoon, we estimated 67 going towards the ramps.
Yeah, because we haven't seen the whole plan yet. Are, are you suggesting a traffic light where the hotel and the residences come out?
No. The traffic light that we're proposing is the new driveway to the retail on Route 1, approximately opposite the, where the ice cream shop is, Rita's, right in that local area.
Do you anticipate that, like, for instance, during the morning rush hour, there's going to be a line of traffic from the residences and from the hotel trying to get onto Plains Road?
To get onto Plains Road? No, during the peak hours, and again, we'll talk more about this in the next two applications. The traffic, first of all, is much lower for those uses than, than what we're talking about here. And if you're taking a left turn, it'll be similar to if you're taking a left turn out of the gas station today, except you don't have to deal with the queues from the traffic light. So it'll be similar to the gas station, but better if that's, but it, it certainly won't be level of service A and B as we're getting at the traffic light.
I mean, I, I don't question, you know, your study or anything like that, but just a week ago, I got stuck in that exit where the traffic was, was blocked all the way from the post road to the entrance of the thruway, you know, blocked solid. So I don't know under those kinds of conditions how people are going to get out of Plains Road.
Well, I, I don't doubt that that, that took place. What we do is we collect the data, we analyze it. The day we collected the data, that wasn't the case. We compare the data that we collect with other data that's collected by DOT, for example, and make sure that we have reasonably accurate counts. Day to day, obviously, they're going to be a little bit different. So the counts and the analysis reflected what we observed when we did our fieldwork. So granted, there were some levels of service at several of these intersections that were levels of service E and F, and we looked at the timing at those intersections and was able to improve them. So part of the problem at some of these signals is I, I think the, the timing plans could be probably in, in need of a good updating. And I think through the OSHA process, hopefully, we'll be able to, to accomplish that.
You know, the one other thing I would, I would like to add is, so long as we're viewing this from the broader context, this property is a little over 16 acres. If we were to develop it purely with retail, which is certainly our right under the regulations, you'd be looking at far more traffic impacts than the fact we're doing a fairly modest-sized retail development of 60,000 square feet with two very low traffic generators of hotel and residential. So in the, in the global world of how this property could be developed in terms of a traffic impact, this is far less than what, what could be proposed.
Are there other questions from the board members? Yes, Mr. Quish?
Yeah, question, I guess, for the, the architect. So we have a, a site that is pretty much 100% pervious now. There's really, there's no blacktop. It's all dirt and some, you know, growth and whatever. So we're looking at getting that number up to like 70% impervious surface when you add the blacktop and the roof?
Yeah, roughly, yes.
Are you proposing any green roof or any, any solar panels to try to mitigate the environmental impact?
Well, the mitigation comes through with the stormwater management.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
Sorry. The mitigation comes through with the stormwater management. So it takes the water from the impervious and recharges the soil through underground galleries, and it lets the natural percolation that's happening, occurring now, will be at the same state when the project is fully developed.
Right, but with the blacktop and the, and the roof, there's, the, the solar gain in this site is, is fairly extensive. I mean, it's quite a change for that piece of property.
In, in, in near the all retail buildings, including this one, it will have a white roof to, to help reflect solar heats. And one of the reasons why you have such robust landscaping requirements throughout the, not only around the perimeter of the site, but also within the site, is so you provide additional shade to help minimize those impacts as well.
Other questions from board members? Yes, Mr. Brown?
What, before you made a statement that you're extremely confident that you will have 100% occupancy in your buildings. And someone mentioned before, if you go up the post road, there's a lot of empty buildings. What makes you so confident that you won't end up in the same place?
Because every retailer has their own specific format that they want. You know, it's interesting, frankly, as you, as you may recall, I represent the developer of the REI project. That's fully tenanted, because each tenant could come in and fit out their space exactly as they wanted it. You know, retailer X may not want to take over a former, a former store of a, of a different configuration, because it's not the way a retailer works. So they want their loading dock in a certain place. They want their walls a certain way. They want their ceiling height to a certain level. They have excruciating detail of how they want their stores fitted out. And that's why, if you look at further up post road, next to Chase, you have the Whole Foods Plaza, and the one across the street where REI is, those are fully tenanted. It's, it's the sort of older buildings that have become a little bit threadbare, that are having a, a more difficult time finding tenants. So that's why, that's why I'm very confident that we'll have retail tenants at this location.
Thank you. Are there other questions from the board? Seeing none, Mr. Solikus, just from a procedural standpoint, before we close this public hearing part for, for this, if we want to look at the other projects in, along with this, can we revisit this if we close this public hearing?
No. You, you would, you would need to keep the, if you, if there was something in those other projects that you thought you needed to talk about in relationship to this project, this hearing would have to be kept open if you were looking for, you know, further information from the, the applicant.
I'd like a consensus from the board. I'm, I, I know we've talked about trying to keep this o, to talk about the other projects along with this. I just want to make sure we have that opportunity. Mr.?
I would suggest keeping each individual public hearing open, and at the conclusion of, of all of them, perhaps return at a following meeting, once we've had the time to digest all of the individual proposals and the interaction, you know, between each of them. And then at that point, I think the board would be able to address particular concerns with individual hearings, to sort of craft and make a decision on the whole.
I, I would agree with that. That's, I think, said a little better than I had wanted to, than I did, but it is what, I wanted to make sure that we had the opportunity to do that. So we'll leave this, we'll leave this public hearing open, and we'll move on to the next, next item. I don't, do we have to vote to, we don't have to vote to keep this open, do we?
No.
No.
No, you can, everyone seems to concur. It's, yeah.
Okay, next item is item five, which is 100 Plains Road, 110 Plains Road, 150 Boston Post Road, MAP 53, block 304, parcel 88A, zone CDD-1, petition of Metro 150 LLC for special permit and site plan review approval to construct a hotel on MAP 43, block 304, parcel 80, and MAP 53, block 304, parcels 83, 84, and 88A, of which Jordan Realty LLC is the owner. Attorney enough?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. John Nuff, 147 Broad Street, on behalf of Metro 150 LLC. This is a special permit and site plan application for a 125-room hotel on the proposed Lot 3 of the REI, of the REI subdivision. Not surprisingly, Lot 3 is adjacent to Interstate 95. Pursuant to 3.16.2.4 of the, of the regulations, hotels with a minimum of 50 rooms are permitted, subject to special permit approval. Beyond the standard bulk requirements, that section also imposes seven other requirements for our hotel use. Not only do we comply with all bulk requirements, we also comply with all the additional requirements for our hotel, and we comply with all parking and buffering requirements. As before, our first presenter is going to be Ray Pear, discuss the site layout and drainage, followed by John Wico, and then Dave Sullivan. Oh, and I have the same photographs in regard to this application as well.
Again, Raymond Pear, West Cotton Mapes, 142 Temple Street. To my right, the site plan for the hotel parcel, we're calling that Lot 3, a 3.54 acre property. Orientation have north to my upper right. The I-95, exit 36, off ramp here on the, on the top side of the paper, page. Plains Road here on the right side. The residential, proposed other residential property development to the, to the southeast, southwest, rather, of the We have a separate entrance, egress, entrance, egress, driveway for this property on Plains Road. We have frontage along the exit ramp, and then bounded by woods here to the south. I've met with the city engineer, and we've discussed the on-site stormwater detention basins. This feature right here, and it too has been designed to meet all of the EP and municipal requirements for stormwater detention. And we've employed water quality measures throughout the site, and taking heed to the city engineer's recommendations and discussion. We've even added four bay and riprap dissipators inside the basin, containing all the water on site. We are not making use of easements toward the Gloria Commons property, as may have been in your package in the past. We do have revised plans demonstrating the utilities and the use of utilities contained on property for the drainage and the sanitary in this direction. Those sheets are C3 and C4, May 11th, 2017. So we meet all the technical required, requirements in working with the city department, engineering department. We've had coordination with the regional water authority and the developer, and here to represent a great improvement to the infrastructure of the area, in particular, the, the water service. And with working, the regional water authority has granted easement, or rather, the developer has granted easement to the water authority, rather, to provide a 12-inch main to run through the property connecting Plains Road all the way through Junior Street to Erna. What that does, it links the two neighborhoods and boasts, boosts, rather, the amount of available water, not only for this site proper, but for the neighborhood in, in general, at all, the Erna Street neighborhood. The fire department is pleased with this and approving of this, as is the water authority and the developer. So it's a great gesture that not only helps the property, but the neighborhood for, for fire protection and, and domestic water service. So this property will be served by water linking through from Plains to Junior Street. In addition, we have proposed a, an emergency access, not a pave, but rather grass paver, should the projects be, be looked on favorably and approved. That access would be just a linkage for emergency vehicles, primarily fire trucks or ambulance, grass pavers. So there was comment prior, as there are other means of entrance or egress, that would be granted by easement, but again, not for general public, purely for safety reasons. We meet all, meet or exceed, rather, all of the zoning requirements for, for the property. Again, that's represented on sheet OS1, and we meet all of the parking requirements for this use, represented on, on sheet OS2. Thank you.
Good evening. John Wico, architect for the project, at office at 50 Broad Street. I've got a few sheets to flip, so I'll make my way over to the drawings. As Ray said, we do meet the zoning requirements related to the building also. Room size, common floor areas, building area, all of those type of things. The landscape for the project, again, is pretty extensive. It exceeds or meets and exceeds the, the city requirements, and also is enhancing the, the site itself for the hotel use. The entry, we'll start there. The entry is off of Plains Road. There's a monument sign with the hotel name and street address. On that, it's on a different sheet. I do want to note, though, that the, the numbers on the detail were lost during digital translation, so, but that'll be under separate permits, so everything will be presented to, to zoning staff with the, with the signage for the, for all three of these projects, actually. But the entrance is a rather attractive entrance. There's a landscaped area with a buffer towards the gas station to the northwest. You also enter between the clubhouse and picket fence. That's a part of the residential development. That access drive is tree-lined. As you go in on the right side, and on the left side, there's a buffer landscaped with a six-foot-high vinyl fence that extends beyond the picket fence at the front. The tree-lined species are swamp white oak and pin oaks, red maple and ginkgo trees. So there's a variety of different ones, still with a rhythm and cadence, but not mundane. so there's a variety of different ones, still with a rhythm and cadence, but not mundane as the length of the driveway goes. Plus, there is also smaller, in the same theme as before, decorative flowering ornamental trees like crabapple birch and yellowwood that are scattered throughout the, the drive, the site, in between the larger shade trees. The screen trees such as by the, the mobile station, and also in this, in this back corner to kind of give a little density to the detention basin and towards the residential properties in the CDD-1 district. We're using Norway and Siberian spruce, again, are verviety and holly for that type of planting arrangement. The foundation plantings, which are pretty significant, are around the building where it's highly visible and more detailed, some more color, and a great variety such as juniper, hydrangea, holly, spirea, ornamental grasses. Quite a lot of lawn in this, on this site. There are three, there are two different types of seed for the lawn itself, and then in the basins, there's also native mixes that are adaptive to moist soils, and then one are adaptive to dry soils. So, that's all specified for green vegetation in the, in the detention ponds. On the site, too, we have a little picnic area with picnic table. Again, we have, I believe there's a bike rack. No, there is not a bike rack at the hotel. That's kind of a, assumed transient by vehicle only. The elevation towards the off-ramp, which is directly adjacent to the interstate highway, is tended to be open. There are some ginkgo lower trees with holly at the base to kind of filter and give some presence to the, to the highway, and gives the character to the, to the hotel and through the landscaping of that property line. Also, the dumpster is located in the far northwest corner, where there are some retaining walls to, to level off the parking area. There's some, some white oak, ginkgo, and holly in that, in that area also. I'm sorry, it's just the, the white oak. The ginkgo and holly are just under the, in this loading area. I can flip through. Again, the SP, LP2 has the plant list descriptions and details. The sheet SD1 shows the, the quality of the dumpster enclosure. It's a reinforced block construction with the cultured stone veneer and a solid vinyl gate at the access point for removal and emptying of the containers. Also on this sheet shows the monument sign, which is a low sign at the, the street, and then there's a pole sign, which is proposed at the, I'll just show it to you, right over here towards the off-ramp and the interchange of Plains Road. And that, those, both those signs meet the requirements. The pole sign is 20, 25 feet tall, so not one of the billboard signs, but the one that actually meets the regulations. And moving on to, to the lighting, again, we've got the photometric plan, which shows the values. We're at zero at all property lines due to the, it's kind of a central location. The lighting is kind of a good way to depict the type of lights. We're using pole lights through the, throughout the parking. There are some building lights, sconces, if you will, against the building that, that keep the building close and tight to the site. And we have all the, the specs and the cut sheets for you to, to study and look at, and the lighting detail shows the shoebox-type LED light at an elevation that's 19 feet off the grade with a maximum height of 20 feet, 20 foot for the pole, with our concrete base also. And that brings me to the hotel building itself. We don't need the zoning chart. It's there for any questions you might have, but everything looks good there. Showing the proposed plan, the ground floor plan, which has rooms, it has utility closets and rooms, the lobby area, the common area, stairs and elevator. As stated, 125 unit, and they're all scheduled on A1, the different floors, different units, and all the different counts. The floor areas are within each of the larger-scale plans. A2 and 3 are the upper floors, more of the same. It's a four-story building, meeting the 40-foot-high requirement. I wanted to point out on A3, the roof plan, which shows the roof turrets and parapets with a worksheet, and 2A3 showing the regulation conformance with the roof projection. We're allowed the 15% above the maximum height, and the gables basically, you know, architecturally accent the building, and those are limited to 13.6%. And then we also have larger-scale eighth-inch drawings in your packet. I pulled this, this one out. One of the other requirements for zoning are the common area. 3A4 has a calculation with shaded areas of the, the uses in the, in the common area. We are over 120 square feet of the common area then is required for the size of the, the room area. All that, those calculations are there for you to look at. And then the upper floors, 3 and 4, continue with more of this, you know, they're just, they're hotel rooms with the different, different beds and sizes, and configurations are, configurations are similar. Let me just go to the elevations. There is an elevator in the building and two egress stairs. So, the 330-second scale elevations give you the overall relationship of the different elevations, showing the front rail elevations in its entirety. Architecturally, there's, there's an attention to the center with, with an EFS siding and a cultured stone base at the first floor with clapboard siding in the field on the upper floors to the parapet. And then on the center section, and then on the, the two ends, we've embellished the cornice with a splay feature at the parapet. The side elevations show that there's a different siding treatment to kind of break up the, the long expanse. In addition to the, to the ins and outs of the building, we've, we've articulated the, the different architectural pieces with different siding colors and different siding exposures, and that's all on this sheet in the material and color little description boxes for you to, to look at. And then we also have, to conclude, well, there's signs too, I should say. We've indicated where the, the hotel signs are going to be located, generally in the upper portion of the gables, and they will, will be coming in for separate permits at the time when a hotel is ready to, to outfit this building. But they do all conform rather greatly, actually. They're rather, for the, they're smaller in nature with, for the size of the gable area that, that we have available. I don't want to spend too much time, I think. I think I can stop right there, and I'll be available for questions. Thanks.
I think you know the pattern, Dave Sullivan.
Good evening. My name is Dave Sullivan, professional engineer with Mylona McBroom. The, the traffic study we conducted, and just to go over quickly again, we looked at existing conditions. We took the existing conditions, grew the background, up to background, which includes growth rates from normal growth and any other developments. In this particular case, the two other developments are the two other applications that are before you tonight. We then add the traffic from this application. In this case, we added all the traffic in and looked at the, the relative impacts. Our study area went from the Exit 36 interchange at Plains Road to Route 1, and then down Route 1, past the retail site to Route 162. We did tube counts or automatic traffic recorder counts, which gave us traffic speeds as well as traffic counts. Traffic speeds were used to evaluate the sightlines. From this driveway, the sightlines meet the conduct requirements for the speeds on, on Plains Road. In terms of the development itself, we generated traffic for the hotel based on Institute of Transportation engineers. To give you an idea, this is, the estimates were 66 trips in the morning, 75 in the afternoon, and 90 on a Saturday, based on ITE. Relat, put that in perspective, the retail that we just talked about was, you know, between five and to over 600 trips on a Saturday. So, it's a, it's a completely different magnitude. We then conducted our traffic analysis, our level of service analysis, located the driveway, and came up with our recommendations for this particular development. All of the signal timing recommendations that we will make to the state will still be in play, whether it's this development or another development that comes, is, comes first. Those recommendations will be provided to the state at the signalized intersection. In terms of access to the hotel piece, it's a single driveway. We're very cognizant of driveway placement and access management, and we worked with Ray.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Could you move the microphone closer? I can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
Thank you.
We work closely with Ray Pear to, to get the best driveway location here. We located the driveway opposite the hotel driveway across the street, and the next thing we typically would look for is on Plains Road itself, as you're going towards I-95, we would be looking to make sure that there's enough width, so if somebody's taking a left turn into the hotel, that it wouldn't stop traffic on Plains Road. It would have been a recommendation to widen it, but it already is wide enough to provide for that function, which is, which is fortunate. As I had alluded to earlier in the previous application, this will be unsignalized during peak hours. Taking a left turn out of there will be similar to what is taking left turn out of the gas station would be the best example. The advantage is you're further away from the signal at I-95, and the disruption from queued vehicles would be less. So, that is our, my presentation for the hotel site.
Just a clarification. You had said 66 cars in the morning. That's per hour during the peak?
Yeah, that's during the morning peak hour, yes.
So how many hours are the peak hours that you're calculating?
That's the, that's the one highest hour in that morning, two-hour period, so it may be from, we count from seven to nine. We take the highest hour, and then we put the highest hour of hotel traffic on that same hour. So it's conservative in, in.
Okay, so, so just so I'm clear, if you take from seven to nine, two-hour period, that you would expect 120 cars? Not quite twice that?
It would not be twice. So the next hour would be less.
Right, so I didn't double it totally. I just took a little less. So, okay, the same thing?
It would probably be significantly less. The peaking characteristic for, for, particularly for residential or hotel and these type of things, the peaks tend to be fairly dramatic. So you do get this type of, of peaking.
Do you have an industry average that we can use? Is it 60%? Is it 75%?
I, I would say it's probably about two-thirds in the next highest hour in the morning.
Okay.
And then you get another little.
Thank you.
Little bit of a bleep.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Grant.
You had mentioned something about, you had made a recommendation to widen the road. Has that been factored into the project to actually be done?
Well, what I did say, we, we would, we'd look to see if widening was required. As you, as you drive around on two-lane roads, you'll probably notice, if somebody's taking a left turn in front of you, some roads you have to wait till he takes the left turn, other roads, there's enough room to what we call a bypass lane to, to go around them. So in this particular case, for a, a commercial driveway, we would want to have that bypass capability. So if the road was narrower, our recommendation would have been to widen it, but the road is already wide enough to allow for that function. So no widening is recommended, and the function that we're looking for exists.
Thank you. Mr. Nuff, do you have any other?
As always, we're happy to answer any questions, you know, but I would be remiss in not suggesting to the commission that, you know, part of, you know, this entire project, the, the three applications together, will have serious benefits to the city from a tax perspective, and in particular regarding the hotel. Hotels are notoriously great tax generators. If you know that the city of Shelton is particularly aggressive in getting new tax revenue to their city. Their plan of conservation and development even calls out specifically trying to encourage more hotels because of the tremendous tax benefits and the fact that there's little or no city services, and the fact that there's very little traffic generated by, by these sorts of facilities. So, you know, the hotel stands on its own in terms of the positive impact it's going to have on the city, both from a tax perspective, but also providing a new and attractive location for, you know, visiting executives, you know, as subway and other, other local businesses expand. This is going to be an opportunity for business and leisure travelers to, to stop at this hotel. So, in sum, these three projects together will generate over $800,000 a year in taxes for the city, which frankly shouldn't be ignored. But happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Salkis, do you have comments?
Yeah, to the applicant, can you tell us about what you're going to be doing for your loading space situation?
Again, Raymond Pear. On the site plan, we provided for two loading spaces, on-surface loading here at the northern part of the site, and we have a, an accessible route into the rear of the building for loading and offloading.
As you probably know, hotels don't have a backup house. You know, any other building, any other retail building has a backup house where you would typically find a true loading dock. Hotels don't have that sort of thing because there'll be other entrances where you can gain access, you know, with your, with your room key. So that's why we, we're looking at a different alternative, and obviously, to the effect that, to the extent that it hampers anyone's operations, it's going to hamper our own. It's going to hamper the hotel's operations, but certainly it won't have any impact on, on any city residents. The whole idea is just to make this as attractive as possible.
Thank you. Mr. Salkis, other comments?
Other than that question, I have no other questions.
Okay. Other questions from, or Mr. Grant?
For the applicant. It was mentioned that there was an emergency accessway to Junior Street. Can you elaborate upon that a little bit better?
The access is not to Junior.
The access is not to Junior Street. It would be a link through to the rear drive of the development below. So one could then provide linkage from the development below. It's very close to Junior Street, but this end of Junior Street is unimproved and frankly not generally practical to have a connection there physically. But it would be a link through to the neighboring development, again, for emergency vehicle access, grass paver type surface.
So you're stating, you're saying that basically, why can't you tie into Junior Street? Why, why you not have that tie into there as a secondary entrance for emergency vehicles? I mean, to have basically one entrance way in for either that development on the hotel or on the apartments, to me, you know, two accesses are better than one.
And, and, and which is exactly why we provided this access on our own property. I'm sure if you've been down Junior Street, sometimes it's not always open, and second of all, if, and when we get to the residential application, obviously, we're trying to create a certain atmosphere there, a certain level of quality in that community that frankly, you know, is inconsistent with an access from Junior.
Mr. Enough, can you pull up the microphone closer to you?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry.
Are there other questions from board members?
Yes. Is the access for the sanitary sewer now going to be the driveway that's coming in off of Plains Road?
The sanitary sewer for the hotel will discharge to the southeast, onto the neighboring property via easement, all the way down to the post road. So there will be a continuous easement through, through the properties out to the post road.
Do you identify the neighboring property being a lot to?
Correct. The neighboring property to the southeast being a lot to the proposed residential application that we're going to present before you.
I see. So the water service will come up the driveway?
That is, that is correct. Here at Plains Road, through the driveway entirely, through the hotel property, down through easement, onto, onto Junior Street, and then Junior Street connects to Erna. So that would create a loop on behalf of the water authority.
And this is going to be a private road?
This entrance drive is a private road, correct.
Private road, maintained by the hotel.
Yes.
Maintained by, maintained by the hotel. Okay, and just on the traffic issue, I didn't quite understand, when you have, if I was going to come out that driveway and take a left towards ninety-five, and you were talking about the fact that the other hotel is directly across the street, wouldn't driveways on either side kind of hamper people on, on either side trying to make that turn?
Actually, the, the opposite is, is true. What you want to avoid is having an offset, because then the turning paths run into each other. So when you have driveways directly lined up, as one's taking a left, the other can take a left inside it, so the two left turns could take place simultaneously. So that's the preferred method.
Is there other comments, questions from board? Mr. Sutton?
Attorney Enough, you noted when discussing the retail component of the project, that one of the more attractive things for, for tenants was the ability to personalize the spaces. With regard to the hotel, it seems, you know, very, very, very particular. Has your client and the architect been working with a particular hotel chain to make these drawings?
Not as of yet, no. But I will tell you, my client has considerable experience with hotels, including in this area. So, again, not a concern.
If I could just have one, one follow-up with that. You mentioned also about the desirability of hotels and adding another hotel to, to the city. What, if anything, can you tell us about vacancy occupancy rates for the existing hotels? Does Milford need another hotel? Is there a need?
I can tell you that the industry standard is that a new hotel won't locate in the municipality unless the other hotels have reached a certain, if they're below a certain vacancy rate. So the fact that we're adding another hotel is actually good news for those, for those other hotels, because clearly you don't want to create something that's going to be a failure, you want to create something that's going to be a success. So we know that there is demand in the marketplace for a new hotel.
Yes, Mr. Dolan.
I know that you just said that you don't have a specific hotel in mind, but do you have a specific type of hotel? Would it be more of an economic chain such as Motel Six, or would it be a higher-end chain, say like a higher regency? Do you have a specific, like, kind of hotel?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Robert Smith. I'm the Executive Managing Director of Metrostar Properties, the managing member of Metro One Fifty LLC.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Please, yeah, the microphone just keeps falling.
Yep. I have extensive experience in the hotel business. My partner and I developed the courtyard in Orange, the courtyard by Marriott in Orange, the residence in, in Milford by Marriott, and the, the Spring Hill Suites by Marriott in Milford as well. Typically, I, you know, I do not build anything that is a low-end quality product. If anything, I think Milford needs a higher-quality product hotel. I think it's very, you know, very significantly roomed with economy level, and, you know, my, you know, my business philosophy for thirty years has been to build the highest quality product and provide the best service to our customers. So, you know, our goal is to either flag this hotel ourselves under our own brand or bring in a higher-quality provider as a brand for the hotel.
Thank you.
Follow-on question? I'm sorry. Mr. Smith, just a follow-on question to that. My experience is, is the higher-end hotels normally offer some kind of food service? And I noticed there wasn't any, anything contemplated. Might you have to change that a little bit?
Food service is a whole nother dynamic in kind of suburban Connecticut. It's very difficult to provide and be profitable with a full-service kitchen, especially at a hotel it's this size, it's quite small. You know, we encourage people to participate in the local economy, and we help restaurants, you know, we help our customers to local restaurants and, and, you know, and that sort of thing. But it's not a large enough hotel to support a full-service restaurant activity.
Mr. Moore.
This is a question for staff and perhaps a proposal to the board. It appears the majority of this conversation has been centered around traffic. And I know in our eight-thirty G project, we offered to have the police department or one of the departments come in, give their input on the traffic studies or any historical issues that is surrounding that area. I want to know if that can be the case in this incident.
Well, all of our applications, as you're aware, go to the traffic commission, and we got a positive report from them on this already. That's part of the package.
Yes, the reason why I state that, because it seems like the board still has questions, even though they sign off, but there's still other issues. Why would that be if, if it signed off on, if we have more issues? Is that just a
Well, I think, I think, you know, I think the board has specific questions about the specific traffic study that was done, and you have been asking the traffic engineer to answer those questions. Whether or not you like the answers, that's up to you. But you have before you an actual traffic engineer, and you have to keep in mind that the police department does not have an on-staff traffic engineer. So you're hearing from an expert who presented to the traffic commission, and the traffic commission, you know, accepted, you know, that expert's testimony.
Mr. Dolan?
Just a follow-up question for that from Mr. Salkis. I believe in the past, for the last couple eight-thirty G applications, the board has had the opportunity to request an independent traffic study. Is that possible, is that only for eight-thirty G applications, or would that apply to this as well?
That would apply to anything the board would like it to apply to. So if you want that, then, you know, you can order that. Keep in mind, though, that there's a statutory clock that is ticking on, on this application at this point. So you'd have to keep that in mind.
And when does that statutory clock run out?
Well, according to the agenda?
August twenty-fourth? Is that?
I, I see August tenth.
Other questions? All right, at this time, thank you.
Thank you.
This is public hearing. So at this time, I would invite anyone in favor of this project, if they would come, approach the podium, state your name and address, and if you would address your comments to the board, and limit them to about three minutes. Thank you. Good evening.
My name is DeForest Smith. I'm a principal with the real estate firm of Pierce, George J. Smith and Son. We're at the Head of the Green at two forty-seven Broad Street. I thought it might be helpful to the board to get a little perspective on the property, the owner, the developer. My firm has been hired by the landowners to sell this property. It's twenty-two acres. It has eleven-hundred feet of frontage on the Boston Post Road, three-hundred feet of frontage on the Connecticut Turnpike. It's basically flat, it's gravel. To my knowledge, there is no rock there. To my knowledge, there's no wetlands there. It has all utilities, including city sewer. It is an ideal property to be developed. The city of Milford Planning and Zoning Board obviously agrees with that. They have zoned it for retail residential development. Your board, your predecessors zoned the property for developers, and we have a developer who wants to develop it. My firm's worked on it for several years. We've talked to dozens, I have personally talked to dozens and dozens of large developers, medium developers, small developers. The one key thing they all wanted was the prime tenant. Get us that hundred, hundred-and-fifty thousand square foot tenant, and we'll buy the property. I talked to dozens and dozens of tenants. I talked to Burlington Coat, which has a facility in Stratford and one in Orange. I said, let's combine them, put it in Milford on this property. And they declined. I was in the mayor's office with Mayor Blake. I told him I thought it'd be a terrific place for Stu Leonard's. They want to go to Orange, this is two exits away. He picked up phone, picked up the phone, called Stu Leonard's, and over several weeks we went back and forth, they declined. Major tenants are very hesitant to go into retail. You've all read the papers, how many of the major boxes are closing? Without the major draw, there's not going to be a major retail. As Attorney Enough said, if there was a major shopping center there, we use a rule of thumb, ten thousand square feet of retail space per acre. Twenty-two acres, you could put about two-hundred thousand square feet there. That would, when you're talking traffic, that would generate a lot more traffic than the proposal that you're hearing tonight. You've got a developer who was more creative than the other developers with whom I spoke, and he took this property and segmented into different uses. The owner of the real estate has resisted. We've had offers to buy one, two, five, six acres, up to and including the Milford Police Department, and he will not subdivide it or sell it himself. He wants to sell the twenty-two acres as one parcel. It took the creative mind of Metro One Fifty, Bob Smith, to come up with a way to accomplish the development of this piece of property. I speak with some experience, I've been in Milford my whole life, I've been in real estate over fifty years. I was the sole agent for the Ryder Trailer Park when they sold it to Saruzi. I was the sole agent for Wayside Furniture when we put that with C B L, R E I T, which is now where Whole Foods is. I've been the sole agent on other similar developments. So I have a pretty good understanding of what it takes to develop a large piece. This is the last large retail piece in the city of Milford. It's a terrific piece. You've got a developer, it's going to be developed. This would produce approximately a million dollars in real estate taxes, hundreds of permanent jobs, hundreds of construction jobs. You have an option to work with the developer that you know, who's done dozens of developments in Milford, a proven commodity, or we can wait till tomorrow, or the next day, or the next year, the property will be developed, it's zoned for that, and you might have another developer with whom you are not familiar. So I just share with you the thought, it's a terrific piece of property, you've got a developer who's creatively put all the pieces together to make this thing work, and I would strongly recommend you consider it. Thank you. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. That's funny, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak in favor of this project? Seeing none, I'd like to open it up now to anyone that is opposed to this project. Again, if you would approach the podium, state your name and address, address your comments to the board, and keep your comments to about three minutes. Anyone opposed?
Good evening. Susan Falsigno, one oh-five Benjamin Heidt Drive. I at least want to go on record as opposed to the project. There's many reasons why, and I think a lot of people echo my sentiments, but no one really wants to, I wish we could just sign in and write our opposed reasons, but it's hard for people to get up here and speak on, you know, on your own behalf, and we don't have representation like obviously the developers have, so we aren't up here with all our fancy plans, and we haven't the research, and we don't have the resources to do it unless, you know, we were backed by somebody else, and we aren't. It's just the residents of the town, and we have good cause to be concerned about a lot of the projects that are going on in this town, but it's difficult when you see these things just come before the board, and I'm not saying that, you know, I mean, I know you have limits, and you just can't refuse and deny things if there's no, you know, grounds for it. But Milford has become like the dumping ground for developing, developing, developing. Every little parcel, every little, every little piece of land in Milford has just been taken to the, to the hill, and everything always requires some kind of special permit or some kind of zone change. And let's be honest, me as just a resident of the, I have no idea what all these zone changes, special permits mean, an S S D, da-da-da-da-da-da-da, nor do I have the time to do the research to figure out what all that stuff means. All I know is it's, it's property that people come in, like the developers that we have, and they take, there's houses there now, and all of a sudden now we're going to be having, you know, two-story, four-story buildings, hotels, you know, and retail property. And I just want to go ahead and say to you, you know, consider, just consider the whole project as a whole. I mean, it's, it's a lot to go on in that one little area. I mean, they're not asking for just one project, it's like three major projects, along with a lot of other big projects that are going on in that, that will be going on in that area. I mean, it's, they haven't started yet, but we know they've come this way, because I've come to some of the meetings, I know they've been approved by what I've read in the newspaper, it just takes time for things to get rolling. And it's going to be a big change, a big change in Milford. And Milford has changed drastically, and I don't, I don't see it going, and it didn't go the right way. In the last ten years, it's been, it's been, it's been bad. And, and I, I know it's not just me, I, I talk to a lot of people, I know everyone feels the same way, but again, no one has the time to come here, and no one wants to get up here and say what they have to say, but I just wish you really consider all the angles to this whole thing. Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ann Mayer. My address is fifty Prospect Street, and I have to echo what the last speaker just said in terms of how your world is changed immensely once development goes in. I know about that, and I'm not here to grouse about that. What I am here, though, is to ask questions on the propensity of the zoning regulation text changes that are part of this project. I would just ask, I, you know, as the previous speaker said, I just, myself just got off of work and tried to get here, and I didn't get here for the beginning of the hearing, so I apologize if this has been already addressed. But I would like to make sure this has been already addressed. But I would like to make sure and understand the tax regulation changes that are being asked for, for this particular project, that they're addressed. You know, I mean, I see things like changing of the sizes of the apartment, changing of the parking that's requested. Traffic that will result is, as a result of this project, it sounds like has already been addressed this evening. Questions have been asked. I echo the sentiments of the previous speaker. Please keep in mind that, you know, while there is development necessary in certain areas of the city, and tax dollars are, you know, just the way the world goes, please keep in mind the responsibility that we have as a city to make the city livable for all, and not necessarily changing regulations for those that can afford to get those regulations changed, as opposed to those of us who just live here and pay our taxes and do what we can. And thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that is opposed to this project and would like Seeing none, Attorney Nuff, you have an opportunity to respond to any of the issues that were brought up.
We're good, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there further questions from the board? All right, seeing none, I'm assuming that it would be the board's pleasure to leave this item open as well. Okay, we will leave this item open as well. Thank you. Is item number six, proposed zoning regulation text changes. Petition of Metro One Fifty LLC to amend the following language of sections three, point one-six, point-two, point-two, CDD dash one, and five, point-one, point-four, figure-four. Amend section three-point-one-six, point-two, point-two to remove the requirement that multifamily residential buildings are only permitted in the CDD dash one zone when at least thirty percent of the units are defined as affordable housing in accordance with section eight dash thirty-G of the Connecticut General Statutes. Amend section three-point-one-six, point-two, point-two, four-B to reduce the permitted minimum square footage of one-bedroom units in multifamily residential buildings in the CDD dash one zone to seven hundred square feet, and amend section five, point-one, point-four, figure-four to set the following minimum off-street parking requirements for multiple-family dwellings in the CDD dash one zone. A, minimum required parking spaces of one to one and a half per efficiency bedroom unit, minimum required parking spaces of one and a half to two per one-bedroom unit, and C, minimum required parking spaces of two to two and a half per two-bedroom units. Attorney Nuff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think it makes, this is the one instance where I think it makes sense to combine the two public hearings, the regulation change as well as the special permit. So if you want to call that one as well, I think it'll make for a more efficient and more sensible presentation.
Do I need a motion on that to do that, Attorney? No. Okay. Then we'll, we're looking at addressing item number seven, ninety-two Plains Road, one hundred Plains Road, one hundred and fifty Boston Post Road, and map fifty-three block three oh four, lot eighty-eight A, zone CDD dash one. Petition of Metro One Fifty LLC for special permit and site plan review approval to construct multifamily residential at map forty-three, block three oh four, lot eighty, and map fifty-three, block three oh four, lots eighty-two, eighty-three, and eighty-eight A, of which Jordan Realty LLC is the owner. Attorney Nuff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As before, I'm going to hand in a memo demonstrating compliance with all your notice requirements, particularly the posting of the sign on the properties. For the record, John Nuff, one forty-seven Broad Street, Milford, Connecticut, on behalf of Metro One Fifty LLC. This is a special permit application for a one-hundred-and-sixty-eight unit multifamily community consisting of twelve efficiency units, one hundred and four one-bedroom units, and fifty-two two-bedroom units. Those units will be located in nine separate buildings, together with a clubhouse that included gym, game room, and meeting room. The proposed community would feature the same high level of design, architecture, and finishes found in other MetroStar communities here in Milford. We are requesting some modest changes to the regulations that pertain to multifamily in the CDD one zone, but other than that, we comply with all bulk and other density standards. In regard to the regulation amendment application, we propose three simple revisions to the CDD one regs pertaining to multifamily residential. First, the elimination of the requirement that residential buildings set aside thirty percent of the units as affordable. Frankly, this requirement is unnecessary and redundant. We all know that any affordable housing developer can propose an affordable housing eight dash thirty-G application in any zone in the city or anywhere in the state that's not industrially zoned. So it's a, it's simply redundant to have a provision whereby it's a permitted use subject to special permit approval. Second of all, you have bulk requirements in your multifamily residential regs in the CDD one zone. An eight dash thirty-G developer isn't bound by those, by those bulk requirements whatsoever. As a matter of fact, if you were to impose a requirement that this have an affordable component, we would need far more units in order to make this financially viable. So by eliminating the requirement that this be eight dash thirty-G, we can maintain the same high level of quality that you've seen in other MetroStar projects. If some other developer in the CDD one zone wants to do a multifamily residential with an eight dash thirty-G component, eliminating it certainly won't stop that developer from going forward. And the bulk standards that are in your regulations will be meaningless under an affordable housing application. So there's no reason to maintain it, and lots of good reasons to eliminate it. We also propose reducing the minimum size of one-bedroom units from eight hundred square feet to seven hundred square feet. Frankly, it's consistent with what the marketplace demands and other towns' requirements. It's also consistent with the fact that if this were in a multi, a mixed-use project, a one-bedroom unit is only required to have five hundred and seventy-five square feet. I would also note that in the RMF-nine, one-bedroom units only require to have seven hundred square feet, and the RMF-sixteen, only four hundred square feet. So the reduction of a hundred square feet is very minor. It is consistent with the marketplace, and we're very confident that will have no impact on the marketability of the apartments. And then the last request is to reduce the parking requirement for residential in the CDD one to match the parking requirements for multifamily residential in the MCDD and the CDD-two zones. Frankly, the existing requirements are far in excess of what is needed, as demonstrated by frankly the applicant's experience at other residential communities, industry standards, and other towns' regulations. We certainly don't want to create more impervious coverage than is necessary, and so the proposed parking standards, as we've seen, are sufficient in other locations that our client has developed residential communities, and we're very confident that the proposed parking standard will work in this location as well. So I want to give you Ray Pear to give you the site layout, and then John and Dave.
Thank you.
Again, Raymond Pear, West Cotton Mapes, one forty-two Temple Street, New Haven. The project before you, we identify as lot number two, residential apartment complex, six-point-seven-three acres. Again, to my right, a colored site plan. Plains Road, upper right-hand corner of the sheet. The project fronts Plains Road, the entrance drive centered on the proposed property. To the west is the property we just discussed, the hotel project. To the east, ordering, is the first project we discussed, the retail, the retail center. Again, nine buildings in total, the clubhouse being the first to the right of the main entrance. To the left, a stone wall entrance with sign. We accommodate a nice circular vehicular travel pattern. We accommodate all safety vehicles. Similarly, we have sidewalk pedestrian linkage throughout the entire development, to all the buildings, to the clubhouse area, and to this nice central green kind of focal point of the site. You could see by the coloring, all the extensive landscaping areas, provide nice yard-like settings in front of much of the buildings. We meet all the bulk rates with the requested revisions as presented, the zoning requirements as listed on sheet OS-one, and the parking requirements on OS-two. We've got surface parking throughout, as well as park under in three of the buildings. Again, met with the city engineer, and we are in agreement. We meet or end or exceed all the DEP admissible requirements for stormwater quality, stormwater management, and water retention. Again, this being a gravel site, we have a great opportunity, which we move forward with the designing of underground stormwater retention systems, water quality measures for groundwater recharge. There is one small open-water body detention system in the rear of the property, primarily for roof runoff, just as a kind of a biofilter and an interesting land feature, landscape feature. Two hundred feet of frontage along Plains Road. Again, to the rear is the junior street property, as, street as earlier discussed. That being said, I'll hand the presentation over to landscape architect, rather, John Wicco. Thank you.
Good evening again, John Wicco, fifty Broad Street in Milford. And I also have additional sheets to flip over, so I'll make my way over here. As Ray mentioned, I think that the project meets all the zoning requirements. I'll concur with him on that related to the buildings as specified in the zoning tables on his OS-one. The landscape, I've said it twice before, this really exceeds the requirements. We wanted to create a environment that's pleasing and pleasant in the landscape environment, and also the architectural appearance and aesthetics. And this plan indicates that. Great diversity of plate material, higher variety of material, detail and color has been specified by Matt Pop. Did a wonderful job with this development in the other two. Really, it's a place for you want to come into. It's enclosed with a fence six foot high around the project. At the front, there's a wooden picket fence that articulates the residential quality as you enter in off of Plains Road. We also, through lots of iterations, we developed three of the buildings to have parking under to free up green space, yard qualities throughout the development. And it's really, the square footage is, we have forty-six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight additional square feet of open space than the minimum required based on the residential unit count. We created seventy parking spaces under three of the buildings to achieve that. You enter off of Plains Road with the residential quality. We've got the clubhouse, stone walls to define a patio off of the clubhouse. We've incorporated a landscape stone wall and incorporated that into the project sign with specimen trees behind it. Even the end of the building labeled E, it is engaged in the grade, so the height of the three-story building is a two-and-a-half stories looking building, so it's going to be very attractive and inviting from the road. And as you enter down through into the project, there's a loop drive feature which creates a common area in the center, a little green. There's walkway system throughout the whole site that meanders through the landscaping, so you're not bound to walking on the road like many other residential developments. There's a lot of underground galleries in the lawn area, so it accommodated that function for the stormwater also. We have benches scattered throughout the site in the loop area, bike racks adjacent to each building, if not the clusters of buildings. Matt designed, again, to a great extent, you know, the flowering accent trees are scattered throughout the site. There's shade trees also. One of the other larger features is all the buffer requirements on the exterior of the site have been doubled, and in many cases, tripled in this building C. Certainly, the distance between A and B to the property is extensive with rather extensive screening plants, which are, again, the Norway Siberian spruce cypress are providing holly. I did mention the fence that goes all the way around. In addition to that, in the walkable invisible areas of the buildings, there's a beautiful array of foundation plantings that are at the entrances and patios. Building A and B, we've created a fence area outside of the first floor. A and B do have residential on the first floor where C, D, and E are parking under. So we created a window garden, if you will, a little private area for visual excitement, where you look out your window and see landscaping, and there's an iron fence that's between the, just on the other side of the sidewalk, a very distinctive feature. The, we also have screened fenced in trash receptacle areas with landscaping that are scattered throughout for convenience. There's eight picnic tables, there's eight grills, six bike racks, and five benches, if we're counting, on this site. So it's a very enjoyable place to come home to. The building sign, let's look, here's on LP-two, there's some of the details that I mentioned, fences, bike rack, plantings, and plant lists. The building sign is incorporated into a landscape wall, so it becomes a little raised end. And then we also have the street numbers at the end closest to the driveway. Also, part of the design we incorporated with, integrated with the landscaping, the fourteen-foot-high site lantern-style light LED, full cutoff, with the light mounted just underneath the cap, so the coach light itself lights up and shines downward. We have the photometrics and the locations of the different fixtures that we're using. The photometric is at point-three of value where point-five is allowed. That's with, as measured with no fence. Since we do have a fence, it's just a point to mention that, obviously, on the other side of the property will be zero because the fence is six feet tall. And we get into the similar pole light detail. It describes the features I just talked about, the fourteen-high-foot pole with the light attached to the top, achieving a maximum height of sixteen-eight, so a very pedestrian style and scale to the lighting. The buildings, I think that's it, yeah. The buildings comprise- The buildings, I think that's it, yeah. The buildings comprise of two types. One, five are larger, are two use types, which means it's a common hallway, common egress with individual flat units off of two and two or three floors. A and B are three, C, D, and E are two floors of residential. Let me just change gears a little bit. I'm showing building A, which is typical for A, B, C, A, B, and, no, I'm sorry, A and B, which have the three floors of residential, exit stairs, elevator service, tall floors. Each A-one sheet of the building has the unit descriptions, areas, square foot calculations, all the kind of pertinent zoning informations are scheduled on those sheets. And each of those buildings have first, second, and third floors, A and B. And then the elevations, the style of the buildings are mid-century residential in quality with rather well-detailed and complementing features. A four has, again, our material and color blocks that describe it, but the general feeling is that there's a brick base with a clipboard siding above, ornamented cornices on the windows, and a architectural panel feature, which is a mid-century aesthetic that complements the building with shutters and soldier courses and all that kind of stuff. So a very good quality detail. All the buildings have the, a section which describes the floor-to-floor ceiling heights, the roof parapets, building height, and where the condensing units of the units will be located, which is on top of the roof behind the parapets. Building C, D, and E are, I have here, building C, the other buildings are in the packet, shows the parking plan with the stair and elevator access down into the parking level. We have additional locations for bike racks, utility rooms, all the handicap requirements for that building are met underneath the buildings themselves, so desirable features for that. And then building, in these buildings, the second and third floor are depicted in the same fashion with all the zoning charts, schedules, and areas of that floor. And the unit size and type is, they're located within the individual unit plans. Let's see if I can kind of speed this up, but again, the, this building is similar in the architectural aesthetic. The only notable difference is we have some openings with columns and pilasters for the parking garage for ventilation. We have a detail of some iron work in that mid-century style, which ordains some of the openings into the garage. And this back and side elevations, this is, this elevation shows a larger opening for the vehicular entrance and how that looks. Building height is thirty-six feet typically for each of the buildings, the large block apartment-style buildings. And I guess I did show E also. I can flip through that. Very similar to, oh, I guess I included it for the, for the end, that end elevation, which I talked about in the beginning as the entrance. You can see this is the, that end elevation, a very attractive in residential scale to Plains Road along with the clubhouse. Boy, I include a lot of drawings. Let me see if I can, okay, good. So now we get to the other style building, which is on the site, which borders the access road to the hotel. They're more of a townhouse-style-looking building with a steeply pitched roof. They are three, two-and-a-half-story buildings, the first story being a one-bedroom flat, and then the second story being a one-bedroom on that level, then a walk-up to an open loft and the second bedroom. So these two-bedroom units have two baths, the first floor being a one-bedroom with one bath. Each of the buildings has a portion, one unit, that has a utility basement access for the, for the house, if you will, not open to the tenants, but open to the, for maintenance and utilities. The elevations are in a colonial aesthetic, having clipboard siding with corner boards. Again, the ornamentated, ornamentation on the windows, accent shutters, dormers, louvered vents, that kind of stuff. So a very comforting residential quality to it with porticoes at the, at the individual entrances. Each unit has a separate and distinct entrance. They're multifamily, single-family units that are in a townhouse configuration. And finally, the clubhouse is the first building that you see, the one you see from the, from Plains Road. And that's the, has a meeting room, exercise room, a game room, and a little kitchenette for heating, pre-prepared food. It's not a kitchen, kitchen facility, but it's just a place for drinks and for, for bringing food in and putting on the counters. And then there's lavatories and an office there. This is also the building that the mailboxes are housed, so as you come in, you can park, there's a drop-off area, or you come into the parking lot for the clubhouse and pick up your mail or drop off mail at your convenience. Well detailed with metal roof, porticoes, and a cupola with a glass monitor. And that just shows you the larger scale of those two drawings. That is it in a nutshell.
Thank you.
Thank you. David Sullivan, Mylona McBroom. For this project, we again looked at existing conditions. We estimated background traffic in the future, which included normal growth rate, included the other developments that we've talked about tonight. We analyzed or reevaluated the driveway itself onto this site. Again, we checked the sightlines based on speed data that we assembled, and the sightlines meet conduct standards. Our study area was Plains Road and Route one from I-95 down to Route 162 on the south. And this particular, focusing on this particular driveway, we had some of the same thought process as we went through the driveway placement. In this particular case, there was no convenient driveway located across the street from it. So our key driveway placement criteria was to make sure we were far enough away from the hotel driveway. In this particular case, we have a spread of over one-hundred-and-twenty-five feet, which is what we told West Cotton Mapes we wanted as a split for the two driveways. Similarly, we were looking at Plains Road to see if left-turn vehicles bypass was available. Once again, there's enough width for westbound vehicles on Plains Road to bypass somebody taking a left turn into the residential development. In terms of site traffic generation from this site, it's, it's a little bit more than the hotel, but still far less than the retail portion. The one-hundred-and-sixty-eight units based on Institute of Transportation engineers has a trip generation estimate of eighty-six trips in the morning, that's in and out, one-hundred-and-four in the afternoon, and eighty-eight on a Saturday midday peak hour. Once again, we assign that traffic to the driveways. The recommendations for signal timing changes, again, would hold for any of these applications should they come first, because we think that's a good thing for operations in the area regardless of which development does come to fruition first. This, similar to the retail portion, qualifies for review by OSTA, so we will be submitting an application to OSTA for this particular site, and that will take place soon. So again, that's a briefer version of a brief summary, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Turn enough.
And one little change. I want to introduce my client, Robert Smith, who wants to address the commission.
Good evening.
Mr. Chairman, Robert Smith from Metrostar Properties, managing member of Metro 150 LLC. You know, I just, you know, heard a lot from the audience about Milford and it's, how it's changed. I would just like to say, you know, I was born and raised here in Milford. I graduated from Milford High School. I've been a developer here for thirty-three years now. I can't even believe that. My father was a prominent builder here for fifty years. I feel I know the real estate market better than anyone of Milford. I built fifty-some-odd buildings in the city. At one point, we were the largest private taxpayer in the city. Yeah, I'm just very comfortable with the work I produce. I'm very proud of the work I produce. I do try to build a higher-quality product. I really try to raise the level of architecture above everyone else. And I think if you look at my work, you would see that. You know, the eight-thirty-G statute, I feel, has really caused a diminishment in the quality of apartment construction. And I see it all over the state where it occurs. You know, the product has to suffer quality in order to make the financial bargain work, because you're, you know, you're leasing thirty percent of the units for so, so much less money than the market rate unit. So the only place you can turn is really to build a cheaper, cheaper, less, less quality product. I refuse to do that. And, you know, I'm asking to have the eight-thirty-G removed. My developer friends say, what are you crazy? Go in and do three-hundred units there. You could do whatever you want. That's not what I want to do. That's not what I, I hope I don't have to do. I'd like to build the quality of work that I'm used to building, that Milford has embraced, the market, the tenants have embraced. The median income of our tenants currently in Milford is a hundred thousand dollars. The median income, median household income in Milford today is eighty thousand dollars. So I don't think any of you would have thought that the, that the income level of the apartment dweller would be higher than the community as a whole. But it's a function of the quality that I do and the tenant that I attract. And these tenants are typically young professionals, engineers working at Sikorsky, physician assistant working at Yale, a scientist. Often, they're moving here from out of state, and they're trying to find their way in Connecticut. And, you know, they need a transitional place to live. And, but, but they want a high-quality product. They want a high-quality, they want high-quality service. They want some amenities. They want to be taken care of. They can afford the product. And it gives them a chance to experience Milford. They, they move into an apartment with us, and they get to experience Milford downtown, the beaches, and, you know, maybe they meet the girl or the guy, and they get married, and they buy a house in Milford. I mean, having this, this, this type of high-quality rental housing is really part of the, you know, completing a residential ecosystem in your community, because it's a place for where people start. So I, overall, the project meets your zoning regulations with the exception of the two things, the parking. I have so much experience in apartments. The parking requirement, as it's written, is way over what we need. To have all that impervious surface is harmful to the environment. It's much better to have more landscaping and less parking. I'm very confident this project will be a thirty-six-million-dollar project, and I would not be investing that kind of money if I thought the parking wouldn't work. And it, you know, again, this is, this parking calculation is used in other parts of the city and other parts of the zoning regulation, so it's been proven, I think, over the years. With that, I'd just like to say, thanks for, thanks for having me, and I hope you look favorably on this project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we have. Are there any questions or?
Thank you. Mr. Solkas.
No, I have no comments at this time.
All right. Questions from the board. Mr. Grant.
I have a question. In regards to snow shelf, snow removal, where would, how would that be handled, and where would that be stacked?
Again, Matt Pop took that into consideration. A lot of the vegetation is seasonal. A lot of vegetation could take the piling of the snow from the driveway, you know, being kicked over to the, to the snow shelf. We do have vegetation, I mean, grass areas plentiful throughout this. Thanks, Ray. I think I can go to this sheet. You know, through the development, there's areas in, in front which could take a limited amount of snow. You can see there's, there's other snow shelf areas, lawn around the area. There'll be at small snow events, it'll be piled in sight. If, just like in the city when larger snow events happen, and we run out of the available space, it will be, you know, trucked off and to make convenient for the, for the tenants at the, at the site. But the vegetation, lawn areas are, have been thought about with the landscape design.
Thank you.
I actually got a couple of comments on the amendments. The first one, amendment five-point-one-point-four, figure four, as far as the parking ratio, that's going to be needed and if this project was approved. I don't see any problems with it. Section three-point-sixteen-point-two-point-two, number four-B, reduction of the unit for, from eight-hundred square feet down to seven-hundred square feet is actually in today's market a very common item to be done. As far as section three-point-sixteen-point-two-point-two, our single-family zones in Milford have been bombarded with eight-thirtyGs. They've been crammed into areas that are just not really made for multiple housing to go into these single-family areas. We have the opportunity here to actually put eight-thirty-G apartments or affordable units in an area that does not affect our single-family resident areas. And I basically would feel that maybe thirty percent might be a little bit too much, but I really would strongly recommend that we actually require affordable units to be placed into this complex. And that's my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. Are there other comments from the board? Mr. Lutz?
Yeah, some comments, some questions. Do you see children being, living here in this project?
Mr. Chairman, Robert Smith, again. We've experienced over the last thirty years a very, very low amount of children. At one point, we had four-hundred-and-sixty apartments and eleven children in total. And those children were already in Milford, usually with divorced families that were already in the school system or had moved, you know, moved out of the house into, you know, an apartment temporarily. But we've never really experienced, especially in one and two bedrooms, we've never really experienced that.
Yeah. The reason I ask is, today I was at a similar kind of a complex, visiting somebody in Orange, and I couldn't help but notice, look around, there was children. And they also had a playground. And then they had an area where the school buses were supposed to pull, to pull in. If there was children here, where would the school bus pick them up?
Raymond Payer. Again, the entrance drive is designed for emergency vehicle circulation, and therefore also bus circulation. also bus circulation and there's certainly ample opportunity in the counterclockwise direction to accommodate, rather, a bus stop. And I think it'd be, most likely to be in the central area, kind of in the focal point of the site, perhaps over here. Or it could be along the further westerly leg of the site, over there. That could be explored further and accommodated.
Yeah, I'm not sure if the board allows their buses to go onto private roads like that. My sense is it would have to be somewhere out on Plains Road, okay, is where you'd have to put a bus stop.
In each municipality, there's different rules that the bus companies have and many of them, you're absolutely right. So, it would really be their decision. So, the site is designed that if they want to come on site, they can. Most times, they would just stop on Plains Road. The lights go up, the cars stop, just like any other road. So, that would be up to the bus company, though.
And I guess the follow-up on that would be, have you considered like any space for a playground or something? I mean, I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, I understand that your, you know, your main tenant will be young professionals, but, you know, you will have some families in there, okay? Is there any thought of a playground or something like that?
There's certainly plenty of room. We're way over in open space, so there's many locations I could point out, but if you wanted to say.
Mr. Chairman, through you, we have this, and, you know, we can add, if, you know, at the board's discretion, we can add some playground amenities, something small. But, you know, if we see that, if that's the way the project's going, we would be adjusting to the market as we go along. We wouldn't, you know, we wouldn't alienate someone. We would add to it. But we do have that very nice green in the middle there and, you know, some other open space areas that are very suitable for a playground. Again, I've nev, in all my years, I've never experienced that demand, but we're certainly willing to leave that up to the board.
Thank you. Are there other questions?
I just want to add one thing on the issue of schoolchildren and Bob obviously spoke about his long extensive history of, and his experience with schoolchildren in his projects here in Milford. I would tell you that the studies will tell you that if you don't have any three-bedroom units, which we don't have, you're going to have very, very minimal number of schoolkids. As soon as you start adding three bedrooms, there's a fairly large or dramatic increase in the number of schoolchildren you can expect. But in efficiencies, one bedroom's very, very few, a slight uptick for two bedrooms, but again, minor. It's not until you get to three-bedroom units that that really takes a hold. And then the other major component to schoolchildren and residential living is cost, the rent. And as Bob said, he wants to build very high-quality developments. But as prices come down, schoolchildren go up and that's just the data.
Thank you. Mr. Moore?
Can you possibly speak to how this residential complex will accommodate our veterans who might be coming home and living in Milford, who may have, accumulate some type of disability or any chance, anyone who has a disability that may be able to live in your.
These buildings are all handicap accessible. There's elevators in the common area, the common hall buildings. All the first-floor units in the smaller buildings along the perimeter are all handicap-equipped. If there's a handicapped person, we certainly welcome them and we, actually, we go in and customize the unit for them above and beyond what's required by the building code.
Thank you. Other questions? Mr. Nichols?
I know this is going to throw a wrench in this project, but you've got to put something that will not stop the traffic on Plains Road if, in fact, there is one child that's got to get on a school bus. One child has got to walk out to Plains Road and that there bus has got to stop. You're going to have traffic stop both ways and one of the main considerations we're having tonight is to get another traffic study in here just to take care of that situation. What can you do to do, take care of that now?
I think we're keeping these hearings open and we'll invest, we'll talk to the bus company and determine how they.
Sir, with all due respect, with Big Drive, Wheeler's Farm Road and every other place that we've decided, now not the magnitude of this size, the bus will not drive onto that property. But they have committed to putting a off area where a bus can pull in and it's safe to load children.
Happy to accommodate that. If you think it's something important, we, I think we have the room to do it.
They may actually agree to go into like the clubhouse parking lot.
Happy to accommodate that request, work with Dave on it in the future, however you'd like us to work. I think that's a fair comment, sir. I do.
Other questions from the board?
I had one question and just with this project, is this something that is, you're going to handle one piece at a time or is this going to happen all at once? I mean, it's a fairly large project. Is it going to be phased or does everything happen at once?
Yeah, I think we hope it happens all at once, but I don't think that's probable. I think it will happen in phases.
Do you see, which phase do you see doing first?
I can't tell you that right now. You know, it's really so many negotiations going on and how things come together. I can, the apartment component wouldn't start until January of next year at a minimum, maybe later, but everything else is in flux all the time with this stuff. So, I really can't tell you. I do think, you know, the post-road piece is kind of on its own out front and, you know, I think the other two would, together, might be a little more of a, you know, more of a distraction.
Fair enough. Okay. Thank you. Is there other questions from the board? Mr. Nichols?
I'd just like to make a statement on this whole project if I could, if it's not going to violate anything else that's going on. I've lived in this town for over 50 years. If you think that you live in a city, used to be a town, that borders Long Island Sound, the Merritt Parkway, 95, and has US-1 running through it and it's not going to be developed, you don't want to live here. I've seen it go from woods where I hunted to shopping centers and I'm not against that. What I'm leading up to is you have a quality developer here and I've seen their work all through Milford, out on the Orange Town Line. I know Jimmy Beard and his property and he's got more down on the river that he cares to even tell you about. But that's the last piece of land, as Mr. Faris Smith noted, and he's a great builder, I'll tell you. He does great work. And whatever's on here, I'm going to vote for because I know the quality of the work and Milford is no longer a town. It's a city and it's going to continue to grow, not so much on US-1, but out on the Merritt Parkway and out that way. Thank you.
Are there any other comments or questions from the board? All right, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Grant.
On the, again, for access, I see you have, you're showing your access from the hotel lot 3 to lot 2. What would be, any disadvantages as actually putting a gate maybe at the end of Junior Road just for emergency entrance/exit? I mean, that way it gives you a street to come right into, basically, and then you can use the access in between. It gives a lot of flexibility for emergency vehicles rather than having one. Yeah, just put a, you know, if you had a fence and a gate.
Yeah, like a grass paver, H20 loaded, grass paver with a gate, breakaway gate. Sure, yeah, I think that's a good idea. These buildings, just for the record, are all fire sprinklered, so they really are of the highest quality, fire safety situation. The fire department has, you know, tested all the radiuses and we added the fire hydrants for them, so we're very, very careful. But I think that's a great idea. That's a fine idea. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments, questions from the board? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing, so I would invite anyone who's in favor of this project to approach the podium, state your name and address, and if you would, address your comments to the board and limit them to about three minutes. Thank you.
James Beard, 762 Wheeler's Farm Road, Milford. Nobody likes change, but unfortunately, the only thing consistent in life is change. And having been a lifelong resident of Milford, I can relate to the speaker from Benjamin Heights. My grandfather was best friends with the Benjamins and we saw the transition of the farms into the houses of today. And I'm sure that the argument back then was traffic, as it is today, and we still get from A to B, although not as quickly as we used to. I've been involved in the growth and development of Milford for most of my life in many capacities. Two capacities was my involvement in the, and still is, the Milford Harbor Management Commission in the past Milford progress. Some 35 years ago, we collectively were trying to reinvigorate downtown Milford and to that extent, we were trying to put the, with the commitments of the harbor, with the, we were trying to put the Allen property into play on Hillwood Street, but we were one step, two step, three steps behind Bob Smith. He was ahead of us. He had the foresight and vision to implement, at that time, the head of the Harbor Plan and also the Yale Downtown Plan to put residential units downtown. The rest is history. Downtown Milford is the envy of every New England town. You can't have economic viability without traffic and the grand list is the backbone of our taxes in our community. My family has been doing business with Bob Smith and his late father, the Robert H. Smith Construction Company, for well over 50 years and we have the utmost respect for his integrity and his dedication to the welfare of Milford. His projects speak for themselves. They are tasteful, impressive, and successful and my family is pleased to enter into this contract and approve of his plans and applications. We would love to keep all our properties vacant, but given our age and taxes, that becomes impossible. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? All right, seeing none, if there is anyone that would like, that is opposed to this project and would like to speak. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Susan Glenn on 99 Carlson Drive and I first want to say that while I'm not here in that capacity, I do happen to be the Chair of the Board of Education here in Milford and was a participant in the long-range planning study that was conducted by Mylona McBroom several years ago. So, in fact, their experts inform us that two and three-bedroom apartments will bring students into the school system. But that's okay. We have room, at least overall. But I do want to state that I do have some general concern over the number of units overall that are being proposed for the west end of Milford because the west end of Milford, according to Mylona McBroom experts, is experiencing lower, less declining enrollment than the east side of town. So, we have, our schools are more empty on the other side of town. That's basically what I wanted to say. But my real reason for being up here tonight is to urge you to deny the request to eliminate the 830G component of this application. I want to thank Mr. Grant for his comments. I think he hit the nail on the head. We have residents in Milford who have had 830G applications shoved down their throat and are living with looming three-story 830G complexes next to their single-family neighborhoods of ranches, raised ranches in Capes. This is Milford's opportunity to increase our 830G stock of affordable housing in an area where it is appropriate to be built. And the comment that far more units would be needed to make this project viable did not escape me, so in my opinion, what it boils down to again, as everybody, the elephant in the room, it's about the money. The veiled innuendo that we could get something worse if we don't comply with this didn't escape me either and I didn't appreciate that. I think this is a humongous project. I'm sure there's lots of money being made and if Mr. Smith is the good, you know, born and raised in Milford, good Milford resident that he says he is, he will do what's right. He will not attempt to bypass the 830G component of this project and he will do his part for Milford and comply. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like, that's opposed to this project that would like to speak? If you would just state your name and address, please.
Hi, Denise Dussetanis, 331 Meadowside Road. We met with the mayor, I don't know, a few weeks ago and he had told us about these particular zones that were designated for 830G housing. So, really, my focus at this hearing is to encourage you to have them build where we thought they should build these projects. As you all know, I do have one of the houses that are beside, in, you know, right in front of me are those three-story, nice 830G apartments. I am convinced that if he builds quality products, he'll be able to do that too, whether there's an 830G component or not. We've been assured by other builders that they're doing that currently when they build these projects and I believe that he can do the same. So, I just encourage you to really stick with our regulation and have them, have him include those, the 830G units in this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is opposed to this project? Good evening again.
Good evening again. Susan Felzigna, 105 Benjamin Heights Drive. I just want to agree with the last two people that were up here and I can't believe that I'm agreeing to an 830G because I was totally against all that housing that's been going around that area because everybody, every developer that's come in that area, those are the grounds they went under so that they can more or less do what they want. But I'd rather see that than to just ignore the fact that we could maybe, you know, accommodate or fall into the percentage that we, this town, city needs, which I'm very disappointed in your comments, Mr. Nicole, that I understand Milford is growing and it's a city, but I still, I'm still being realistic. I don't think just because we're a city, we have to have everything that big cities have. We're not a big city. We're not a New Haven. We're not a Bridgeport and I hope we never turn into a big city like that because it's, this area really doesn't warrant that. It should have stayed a little bit different, but that's beside the fact. But anyway, I oppose the project, but if it has to go through, I'd like you to consider the 8-30G. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that's opposed to this project? Good evening.
Good evening again. Ann Meyer, 50 Prospect Street. I agree with the sentiments about 830G and one math issue, the apartments go in, it adds to the denominator of trying to get to the percentage and it'll just make that much more that we're going to have to get to somewhere else that can go into a neighborhood for a developer who doesn't care as much. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, attorney enough, if you would like to rebut any of the comments that were made.
Sure. Just a few things, Mr. Chairman, and I've learned about the mic. As I noted, as rents decrease, schoolkids go up. So, I know that Ms. Glennon has, you know, legitimate concerns about the number of schoolchildren and where they're located in the city, but if you make this 830G, you will have more children rather than less. So, there's an inconsistency in her position, so we're just trying to build the best quality product we can while maximizing the taxes for the. product we can while maximizing the taxes for the city, minimizing the services. So, you know, that's really sort of the challenge here, because we're trying to accomplish a lot of different things. We talked about if this were all retail, we can talk about if it was all residential, and there's certainly no veiled innuendo, there's no veiled threat. If there's a veiled threat, then we said we're going to make the whole thing 830G, and we're not doing that. The question is, how do you balance all the differing requirements that you want in really good development? You want to minimize traffic, we've done that with the addition of the hotel and residential. You want to maximize taxes, which we're doing with the hotel and the retail. You want to maintain a vitality in your city, and you do that with the residential, bringing in younger people. There are so many towns in Connecticut, and I'm blessed that I get to appear before many, many different towns and many different commissions throughout the state. Those towns that are turning their back on multifamily residential are becoming calcified. No one wants to live there, no one's moving in, their property values are decreasing, and their property taxes are going up, because there's no feeder system. And the towns that are, have a little bit more foresight are welcoming multifamily residential, welcoming those young residents, welcoming those young professionals that Bob described, who have a lot of discretionary income. They may have student loans, so they can't buy a house, or their, the lifestyle may be such that they're not ready to settle down just yet, but they have discretionary income, and they'll be coming and patronizing our businesses and restaurants and services. So that's a great thing for the town. And then service to the business community, which is what the hotel is going to provide. So it's those four components that this project addresses in the best possible fashion. So I know we're keeping the hearing open, I know we have to address the issue regarding the bus stop, if there's anything else you want us to take a look at, but, you know, I think we've, you know, done a very good job in demonstrating the manner in which we meet all your regulations, every one of them, except for the few that we're asking for the regulation amendment for, which is entirely appropriate, and if someone wants to do an 830G application in the CDD One Zone, this regulation amendment doesn't prevent a developer from doing so. So we look forward to being before you again, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. At this time, if there's anyone in the audience that did, that does want to respond to Attorney Nuff's comments, feel free to come forward and address any issues that were brought Good evening.
Good evening. Frank Janice, three-thirty-one Meadowside Road. We were told through all these 830Gs that we've been through, that they're really for the young people coming in who can't afford, they're just starting out. For him to say that they're not going to come in now because of rents and stuff, I think that's kind of outside the box. If anyone needs it, it's the young kids, the people starting out, the kids who have one, you know, a baby on the way, maybe. But I think if you choose not to pull the 830G here, or if you choose to pull 830G here, you're kind of going against Milford's own laws, or own, not their laws, but their own setting on it. The things that they've stood by through all these so far, all the 830Gs, here's a great opportunity in a place that won't be in residential. As Mr. Grant said, I think we should take advantage of this as a town, and I know he seems to really want to do the right thing, Mr. Smith, I hope he does. I hope you'll stand by your guns on this one and help the town meet their quota. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak and address any of the comments that were made by Mr. Nuff? All right, seeing none, Attorney Nuff, you have one last opportunity to respond, or Mr. Smith?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Bob Smith. I just want to say again, not every, not every piece of real estate and every development, not every building has to be the same. There's very expensive houses on the water, there's very inexpensive houses inland. There's good-looking shopping centers, and there's not such good-looking shopping centers, there's high-quality, low-quality. I just happen to build high-quality apartments. I don't think that's a bad thing, I have nothing against affordable housing, I have nothing against people who can't afford my apartments, but I just build in a different class of building. And with the 830G stigma, I think it lowers the quality, it certainly hurts the financial model and reduces the quality of the product that I can produce. Again, I'm just, I'm not against affordable housing for people at all, I just want to build the product that I'm used to building and I'm good at building, and that has been very successful in building the tax base in Milford and bringing nice young people to Milford. It's not that I'm against it, I just, this is the quality product that I build, and what I'd like to be able to build on this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions from the board?
I got two questions. One, statement was made is 830Gs bring in more children. Mr. Selkis, is that correct?
Well, if we were to look at the properties that Mr. Smith had and the number of units he has, and compare it to the largest 830G which we have on file, which would be Avalon, there are, there are children at Avalon in greater quantities that, and have been found in the other properties that Mr. Smith owned.
This particular project, how many children would that increase?
Well, all I can tell you is, based on the testimony I heard tonight, is that if Mr. Smith had four hundred units and had only eleven children at its max, and we're looking at a hundred and sixty-eight units, I believe, tonight, you're looking at one or two kids, maybe.
Second question is, how is building a quality unit, how do you, by doing, by renting it out under an 830G requirements, how does that lower the quality of what you're building? Are you actually putting in cheaper materials into the building?
Yeah, the, real estate's valued by the income it produces. So with the affordable component, the income is much lower than it would be in what I normally build. And because the income's lower, the value of the building's lower. So because the value of the building's lower, I can't, I can't spend as much money as I would normally spend to build the quality that I would typically build. So that, that, that's just a, that's just a financial, that's the financial model. I mean, it's, it's not allowing us to gain the revenues we need to capitalize the cost of construction at the level it needs to be capitalized at to build the quality that we build. And that's why you see what the 830Gs around town are, are very simple buildings. I mean, they're very simple, you know, inexpensive buildings.
So basically, you're saying that the aesthetics of the building, instead of doing brick, you do siding?
Right.
But, I mean, basically, the structural elements of the building would still be the same, because it's required, right?
Right.
So it's really just the look of the building that you're talking about.
And the finishes, and the finishes, most importantly, and the finishes. So granite, you know, a Formica countertop, instead of a granite countertop, a higher-end kitchen, higher-end appliances, and I typically put Samsung ranges and Samsung refrigerators that are, you know, pretty expensive, and, you know, you go back to the basic GE model, you have to just lower the quality. And, you know, it's for, I think all the apartment development is being forced to be this lower-level product because of 830G. I think it's going to backfire on, on communities because the quality is so low. It's just a simple financial model, it's just, you can't get the same revenue.
You're just talking the aesthetics of the building, but basically, structure's the same, safety's the same.
Yeah, the framing, the foundation.
Like I said, instead of doing brick, do vinyl siding.
Right, it's all vinyl.
Something of that nature.
Less expensive windows.
Sure, it could still look very nice and be very quality.
Right, right.
Are there other comments or questions from the board? Mr. Quish.
Yeah, I would like to, obviously, all the, everything's still open at this point. There's a lot of stuff to think about, it's getting late, I'd like to take this up the next time, we'll have opportunity to ask more questions, visit the site again, see, try to visualize everything that, the input that we've had tonight onto the site, and get a deeper feel for it, and address it at a future meeting.
All right. Mr. Verone.
I agree, it's getting late. I do want to make a comment concerning the 830G. We have three state representatives at the current time working on legislation to try and lift the burden of 830G from Milford. This is a state law that was enacted thirty-plus years ago by a bunch of bureaucrats in Hartford, they've jammed it down Milford's throat. We have a lot of affordable housing here in Milford that doesn't qualify for that because it was built before, and they won't give us credit for that. I, for one, do not want 830G in here, I like this project the way it is, and I think that we need to get off this bandwagon of 830G in Milford. We're fighting the state with our representatives to stop having them jam this down our throat, so I am not for an 830G in here at all, and I will vote no against that.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols.
Yeah, I have a question here for Mr. Selkis. If in fact Wheeler's Farm Road, Bick Drive, and the proposal from Grillo come into fruition, won't we exceed our capabilities in 830G?
If you're asking, if those are built, would we meet our four-year moratorium level? The answer is yes, we would have our four-year moratorium.
Thank you. If there's no other comments or questions on this, Mr. Quish, I would agree that we would take this up at our next meeting. Is there any information that the board is looking for from either the applicant? Yes, Mr. Quish.
Um, yeah, I don't know if we can have executive session with our council and have them advise us on any potential implications for the 830G change. We have, we have a council that handles our 830Gs, might be able to weigh in on that before we, before we meet.
Mr. Selkis, is that possible?
I don't understand the question.
I think the question is, Mr. Quish, and I don't want to answer for you, but what my understanding is, is he would like to see what, what implications it will have if we take that wording out of the, out of the regulation.
The only implication would be that someone who wanted to build market, I'm sorry, regular housing there, such as the application tonight, wouldn't be able to do it. It would, under our regulations, have to be 830G. And again, if the regulation is amended to remove that language, that doesn't preclude someone coming in and putting in 830G, because they can do that in any zone in the city other than the industrial zone. So there's no, there's really no, there's no implication, other than if you want regular market-rate housing in the CDD One Zone, you're not going to get it without the proposed change.
Thank you. Mr. Quish, does that answer the question, or?
I'm, I'm fine with that answer, I can bring this up at a different time.
Yeah, I have a question.
And by the way, just to be clear, if you want to talk to your city attorney, but it can't be during executive session, because it doesn't meet any of the criteria for executive session, and we would want an opportunity to respond, but I'm very confident that John Bircham would give you the exact same response that David just gave you.
All right, is there?
Mr. Chairman, just another question. Do we have the affordable housing provision in all our CDDs?
I'd have to look at the book, I'm not sure it's in all the CDDs. I know it's in several of them, but not all of them.
I think there's a few other.
Pardon me? Yeah, I, I don't think it's in the CDD Five, I'd have, I'd have to look, but I don't know.
It's in the CDD Four and the CDD Five, I believe, yes, four and five.
So it's only, it's in two of the CDDs? Okay, thank you.
All right, if there's no other information, question, comments, we'll, we'll keep this open and address it at our next meeting? Does that give everyone enough time to come up with any other questions they may have? All right, thank you.
Richard, you know, I would be remiss, you know, I understand that this may be Phyllis' last meeting, is that true? And I just want to say publicly, what a great joy it's been working with her for many years. I mean, she's, she's really a terrific public servant, a great smiling face every time you walk into Planning and Zoning Office, and I really think that the commission ought to give her a round of applause for all the great work she's done. So thank you, Phyllis. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So we have just a couple other things I think we can get through, any liaison reports?
I did sightwalks with the Inland Wetland on one-ninety-five West River Street and zero Westmore Drive.
Thank you. Regulation Subcommittee, Mr. Grant?
Nothing this evening.
I'd look for a motion for approval of minutes for five-two meeting, Mr. Sutton?
I move to approve the minutes.
Chair's report, I have no report, except to say the same with, as Attorney Nuff said, that we want to just thank Phyllis for her service to the board. We have a card, and I have some flowers for you as well.
Oh, thank you, thanks, guys. It's, it's been my pleasure, as well as yours, I appreciate it. Thank you. Oh, thank you, oh my God.
This from the board.
Thanks. Hi.
And that's my report. Staff report?
Oh, sure, ask me to give a report after you give her flowers. How do I follow that up? I have no report this evening, other than, you know, thank you, Phyllis, for all of your years of hard work. It's been a, it's been a pleasure working with you.
Okay, motion to adjourn? Sutton's second, Mr. Grant, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Eleven o'clock on the button.
There we go.